All right, I'll pick up the agenda. I guess I should have known those great big words that say "on air" staring me in the face here.
Oh, yeah, the sign's working.
We are here a little early today for a study session to find out about the state of the arts. So this should be a nice, happy, fun study session.
Yeah, despite the month of October, thank you, Mayor, we are looking forward to sharing some good news and positive energy of what's happening with the cultural arts in Salina and helping equip you to have hopefully a deeper or better understanding of the importance that the cultural sector plays with the arts. We can start that anytime.
No, you might introduce yourself.
Yes. My name is Brad Anderson. I'm Director of Arts and Humanities for the city. We also have a number of guests here today that we're sharing this time with. Many of the things that we do are in partnership or relationship with other nonprofit cultural arts providers, agencies, and individual artists that you'll learn about here in a little bit. So today's purpose is to give you kind of both a national and a local impact, not entirely. Every, we focus mostly on the organizations that generate revenue through tickets, memberships, and other kinds of major funding, and also those that you all help provide funding to, either through in-kind support, through transient guest tax, or other direct support in some program service or amenity that helps them do their business and reach more citizens. So with that, we can go to the next one. Today's organizations that you're going to hear from are listed here in this order. They'll take a few minutes to share a little bit about the impact of public funding and their role in the community, and then if possible, we'd like to, well, I'm going to do my best to save ample time at the end of all of our presentations for any questions that you have. So please, please, if you can hold those, then we'll be sure to be able to get through everything. So with that, I'll invite Adrian Allen up to the podium to share about the Salina Symphony.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us. I just want to share a little bit in general about the symphony with you and a bit about economic impact and impact down to our individual patrons. So the mission of the Salina Symphony is twofold: enriching lives through artistic music performance and education. So I'm going to touch on both of those a bit today. We do perform a six-concert season, which also, and as well as a patriotic outdoor concert each June in Abilene, as well as chamber concerts and special events. We're very excited, and I hope you've heard about our new music director. We're really excited about the leadership of Yannif Sagal. He's only the third music director in the organization's history, and we're very grateful for his leadership after three years of transition. Along with performing with the adult orchestra, we do have a youth education program that we're really proud of. We have five ensembles in our program: the Youth Symphony, Youth String Ensemble, Wind Ensemble, Preparatory Orchestra, and Youth Choir. And we serve approximately 140 students from 25 different schools. We're really proud of the fact that we do not turn students away for inability to pay. So of course, the support of our community makes that possible. We also regularly take guest artists into the schools, which is very impactful. This couple weeks ago, we did that and invited those students back to the symphony. Many of them brought their parents and came hearing back from teachers that it was a great experience for them. Something that you may not think of is that having a symphony orchestra in Salina impacts employers that are trying to recruit folks to come here. So sometimes someone would want an opportunity to play in an orchestra. One of our musicians, her husband was looking for a residency, a medical residency, and she said, "My one requirement is that you have an orchestra." Also, we've had families in who, it's very important to them that there's a youth orchestra in town. So I'm very thankful we can provide that opportunity for performance opportunities for both adults and students. Brad will touch on a lot of this later, but the arts and culture organizations have a significant economic impact, and we do invest the majority of our budget back into the community by contracting with local artists and businesses. And it's really amazing to me that 50% of our patrons come in from outside Saline County. And this has grown significantly with the support of the cultural arts and regional marketing funding, the CARM funding. And I am really pleased that those folks coming in from outside Salina also spend money at restaurants, they go shopping, they stay at hotels, and there's really no busier place downtown with the restaurants as after a symphony or Stiefel concert or community theater or an art center event. So in that way, your support of the arts through the CARM funding multiplies to impact many areas of our community. I would say the arts is really wonderful about partnering as well. We all believe that we can do more together than we could do apart. Just this year, we are partnering with the Stiefel Theater, Salina Arts and Humanities, Theater Salina, Tamara House School of Dance, and Eisenhower Presidential Library. And we regularly partner with all the folks you'll hear from today on marketing. So it's just essential to us, and we try to make the most of our dollars by partnering together. One more thing we do that's really fun, and hopefully you've heard about this once in a while, if you had kids come through this line of public school system. We invite 1,200 students to a concert at the Stiefel Theater each year, and we're able to fund that all the way through providing busing, so the school system isn't having to do that. It's one of the highlights of the season for our musicians. They love performing that for that appreciative young audience. And some of the thank you letters we get say things like, "I'll never forget it, and I hope I can go again." So we're really enriching lives of our young people. In addition, on the other end of the age spectrum, after one of our concerts a couple years ago, I got an email from one of our musicians that said one of his longtime friends had driven his wife to a concert, and his wife was entering a part of life where memories get blurry and agitation sets in with a mental decline. And he could see them from where he sat in the orchestra and was able to see tears streaming down her cheeks during the entire concert because the music brought memories and joy. And the friend shared with our musician that it was the happiest they'd been in a long time. So not only does music and the arts have an economic impact, which is critical, but we also have an individual impact and enrich lives of those in Salina and the surrounding areas. So these stories, as I close, tie in directly to our mission. And early in my tenure at the symphony, we selected a tagline version of our mission: changing lives through music. And thanks to your support and the support of so many people in our community, we are indeed changing lives. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I sort of laughed when you mentioned the medical resident being recruited.
Yes.
When I came here for my second interview in 1998, Dr. Hutchinson took me to the Salina Symphony. It was at Central High School that time. I said, "Wow." I kind of thought I liked the place. This place must be something else if it has a symphony orchestra that big and that good. It was a great concert, but it does influence people's decisions about the community.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioners, no, that's quite all right. Michael Spicer's going to come up next. And as he comes up to the mic, I want to call your attention to the packet I gave you. I should have explained that. There are some organizational profiles from each of these organizations you're hearing from, and so that gives you some of the nuts and bolts, budget, staffing sizes, and so on, to kind of help drill down just a little bit more as they're speaking about impact. So with that, Michael.
Thank you. I am Michael Spicer. Excuse me. I am celebrating my 25th anniversary at Theater Salina. It has been a pleasure for almost all of those 25 years. We closed "Adam's Family" two weeks ago, and at one of the final performances, one of my board members came up to me with a woman that, who had come in from Missouri to see the show, and she was under the assumption that when we did a show and we bought the royalties from companies in New York, that everything else came with it. So just to allay some misconceptions and to explain exactly the depth of what we do, I want to give you a little bit of background about Theater Salina. We create everything you see on our stage: all of the sets, costumes, properties, and all of our marketing is created originally for each production. All of the creatives, with the exception of occasionally someone that we bring in like Mr. Tyree Salin, are local. All of our musicians are local. 93% to 95% of all dollars that come into Theater Salina are spent directly into the local economy, and that doesn't include the ancillary spending that Brad may talk about in terms of buying food, gas, lodging, and other kinds of entertainment. Last year, we put $840,723,000 into the local economy. Over the last five years, that's been, that was $3,712,185. We have 350 student registrations. When we built the Theater Education Wing, we were hoping for 150, and fortunately, we are able to say that we've had 350 each of the last four years, with the exception of COVID, when it dropped down to 275, and 275 during COVID, I think, was still remarkable. Last week, 2,100 students from local, regional, parochial, and homeschool came to see our Center for Theater Arts production of Big Bad the Musical, which is young people performing for young people. Last season, 679 volunteers donated over 65,000 hours to help create live theater for our patrons, and that doesn't count the additional hundreds who helped create the Center for Theater Arts Shows. A few years ago, Playbill.com, when you go to New York, or you go to a theater and they hand you a program, in New York, it's printed by Playbill. And three years ago, they did a study saying, "These are the top 10 academy or college programs with the greatest representation on Broadway." And at the moment that they did that, we had students at six of those 10 organizations: Boston Conservatory, Cincinnati Conservatory of Music, Point Park, American Academy of Juvenile Arts, Oklahoma City University, and the Tisch School at New York University. For a community theater in the middle of Kansas, in a town of 50,000, to have that kind of representation is extraordinary. Of course, that flows up and down. But more importantly, the kids that we touch, who don't go to those schools, but have a lifelong love for theater and for culture, is really what we're proudest of. CARM funding, as you can see on your sheet that Brad gave, is critical to us. In 2010, when we opened the Theater Education Wing, we were at about 30% outside 67401, 67402. By 2016, that had risen to 40%. Our last two musicals, Kinky Boots and Adam's Family, respectively, had 49% outside those ZIP codes, including 10 other states, and 45% outside those ZIP codes, including nine other states. We are truly a regional theater. We are incredibly proud of the quality we're able to produce. One of the things I always say at this time of year, when I get new board members on, is we invite you to go to other community theaters and indeed, other professional theaters, and come back and look at what we do here, and I promise you, you'll be enormously proud of the level of quality we are able to produce. That's all I have to say, but thank you very much for your time.
As Misty Serene comes up for the Salina Art Center, this would be a good time to say, I regularly, because of the strength of these organizations and others in the community, when I'm talking to peer directors, I'll say, "We may be just under 50,000 in our population, but I can honestly say we're functioning in terms of quality of programming, depth, and the professionalism that's there if a town three times that size." We are really doing well that are beyond our population. So, Misty.
Okay. We appreciate this time with you guys. The Art Center is thriving right now, which is fantastic, and it is because of the support of lots of people within our community, including the city of Salina. One of the things that we launched in May was, you can put up my slide, was a building creatively capital campaign, and through that process, we've been able to collect a lot of stories from our donors and our supporters. And all of them unanimously support, of course, the Art Center as a piece of the quality of life in Salina, but it's also used regularly as a recruiting tool for our major businesses and industries. And we know that Arts and Humanities across the state of Kansas are an economic driver overall, contributing over $4 billion just to the state's economy, which accounts for about 2%, a little over 2% of Kansas's GDP. The city of Salina offers us, through the Art Center, in-kind support. So you, we have an agreement that provides for our HVAC maintenance and janitorial service and some utility support in one of our three facilities. We used to have cash support for summer art programming, but instead of that, for the last three years, we have been able to apply for scholarship funding. So basically, any child who wants to participate in an art class has access, thanks to Salina Parks and Rec. We have never had to turn away a child for the ability to pay for a class that they would like to take. And because of that example, we have private donors who have done the exact same thing for any adult. So any adult living on a fixed income who wants to take an art class at Salina Art Center can, simply by applying for a scholarship that will be funded by a private donor. We offered $900 in scholarships last year to students, thanks to Parks and Rec. And these offsetting expenses through the HVAC support and the utility support allow us to do a lot of really great things in our community. 2,598 students, adults and children, attended classes in the last year. That's still down from COVID, but is a tremendous recovery, about 50% higher than the year before. We were able to pay 16 artists to teach classes for us, thanks to that support. And we've been fortunate to add a lot of exciting classes like ceramics, thanks to the city of Salina, who donated all of their ceramics equipment to our program. But we also added classes this year, like filmmaking. So we had, I think, eight young filmmakers create movies, stop-action animated movies for us. Art Center classes aren't just for kids. Like I said, our fastest-growing audience right now is adult art makers. Art making and viewing contributes to overall mental health and physical wellness of the people who participate, so it is definitely a positive lifestyle choice for a lot of people. Adults engaging in art making are sharpening their brain muscles, becoming more effective corporate and civic leaders in our community. We've always said that kids don't take art classes just to become artists. Kids take art classes because they're going to be tomorrow's thinkers, and we need them to be creative, flexible, and independent in order to function in the world that we have today. Our newest art-making space is, of course, the Warehouse Education Studio. That space, many of you might remember as a rental space, but it is now completely a working art studio. We have the ceramics program, printmaking, woodworking, all sorts of painting, drawing, and lots of different things for people to do in that space now. In addition to the classes, we have a free artery maker space where families can come. They can come to either the Art Center galleries or the warehouse to just participate. It's a great intergenerational space. Everything is free, and it's always available to the public. We had about 388 people participate in what we call open studio time, where they can come in and use all of the Art Center equipment last year. And we also have provided over 100 hours of private art lessons in things like traditional art, photography, and digital art. Exhibitions are, of course, the heart of what we do, and those exhibitions that happen within the Art Center galleries really do help us use art as a catalyst to have conversations that matter. Again, it's not so much just about the art that's happening, but about what conversations that art inspires. So we're able to do a lot around our history, our shared history, our past, our present, our future, social justice, and a variety of issues that are relevant to our community. We've hosted conversation town hall meetings on the new jail facility before it was developed and in its early stages. We've hosted conversations on critical race theory. We posted conversations on the history of Salina. So we really try to make sure that those conversations are vast and varied and offer opportunity for everybody to participate and share their point of view. Over 4,000 visitors came to the Art Center last year. 34% of those report that they are outside of the 67401 ZIP code. We brought in 13 visiting artists to inspire diversity in our conversations. And we also started a virtual tour program that welcomed over 2,000 unique online visitors as of today. Finally, the Art Center Cinema is our only downtown movie theater. The cinema and the gallery gift shop are sales tax-producing businesses as part of the Downtown Business Improvement District. The cinema was, of course, the hardest hit by the pandemic and is still in recovery. But again, last year, about 4,000 tickets were sold. I look forward to having some time with you in the future to talk more specifically about building creatively, but in the meantime, I want to thank you for the support of the arts, and remember that the arts are a viable and extremely important piece of the quality of life that brings people to Salina. They will come because of great jobs and hopefully new housing, but they will stay because they love the quality of life here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Missy, and as the Rolling Hills Zoo comes up to present, I want to call your attention on the organizational profiles. The last item on those gives you, as commissioners, for those challenging questions that you get of, "Why do we do this? Why do we support?" or "What difference does it make?" We've asked those organizations to give you kind of a picture of what the impact of 8% of funding for this line of art center means in hours of service or number of classes or lives that are touched, and each one of the organizations has done their best to indicate kind of what direct impact that has. So with that being said, Director of the Rolling Hills Zoo is next, Ryan.
Bring it up a little bit. Hi, I'm Ryan Van Zant, Executive Director of the Rolling Hills Zoo, and I wanted to come up here today to, one, thank you for having us here, and, two, because I haven't had the pleasure to meet most of you yet. I've been here just shy of two years now, but my family and I love this place, and we take advantage of all the arts opportunities around town. And I just wanted to start off by saying that we were recently reaccredited by the AZA, which is the gold standard of zoos and aquariums across the country and in some ways around the world. So, you know, our town of 50,000 has a world-class zoo here that we worked really hard toward our mission of touching hearts, igniting passion, and saving wildlife. So many aspects go into that mission, but to provide that opportunity, that quality of life aspect for the citizens of Salina, but also to tourists coming from literally all over the country. In fact, in 2021, we had 86,522 guests come through our doors, so that's right at the heels of COVID. So on average, we have around 80,000 guests come through the zoo, so we're up a little bit. And of those 86,000 guests, we had them come from 19,944 different ZIP codes. So if you take into account that Kansas has about 697 ZIP codes and you extrapolate that out, it comes out to roughly 27 states that people stop at the Rolling Hills Zoo and spend their time and spend their money. But I just, again, wanted to introduce myself, but the one with the real information today is our Director of Marketing and Development, Lynda Henderson.
Thank you, Ryan. Yes, as Director of Development and Marketing at Rolling Hills Zoo, I work directly with the CARM grant funding, and so that is a really important piece for everything that we do out there. While we continue to market regionally, our CARM grant funding has allowed us to reach beyond our regional areas and outside of Kansas. By doing so, we are capturing visitors who will also enjoy Salina's many other amenities, including our other culturals, purchase gas, or even plan extended overnight stays in Salina. While the current circumstances have not allowed us to continue and return to our surveying of guests as we had in the past, based off of our previous data, we know that 46% of our regional visitors are dining in our local restaurants. During their visit, 14% will stay overnight at a local hospitality venue, 27% will do some shopping while they're in Salina, 5% will attend another special event or another local attraction in our community, and 9% will do something other than those things listed above. So they're very active once they do get here. We are proud to be supporters of our local partners, and we are always looking for marketing collaborations whenever possible. This includes in showcasing Salina's hotels on our website with links for easy bookings and collaborating on our cultural events postcard that is mailed to over 3,500 households outside of Salina and in the Salina region, or collaborating with another attraction on a multi-day visit to Salina with all potential for overnight stays. Whenever possible, we will include the Visit Salina or the Salina A&E Events Calendar logos on our marketing as a way to entice people to explore all that Salina has to offer. Rolling Hills Zoo believes in utilizing local as much as possible. We currently have 43 full-time employees, and when possible, we will hire an additional 24 to 40 seasonal employees. This year was a little harder to do that. We spend over $4 million each year on goods and services, and with the majority of those expenditures are recirculating in our local economy. This past summer, Rolling Hills Zoo opened our newest exhibit, The Pride of the Prairie. This new habitat encompasses nearly 20,000 square foot and features 180-degree immersive experience inside its massive cave. There, guests can experience being directly underneath a 450-pound lion or coming nose-to-nose with the lioness at one of the windows of the cave. A special training window inside the cave also allows our guests to be just feet away as animal care staff safely perform daily husbandry with the lions, all part of the exemplary care that we offer each of our animals at the zoo. Of course, the lionists love to survey their territory from high above the vantage point atop the cave, where they keep a watchful eye on our staff, our visitors, and the animals over in our neighboring kids' country. With the opening of our new African lion habitat, we also revamped our billboards this year, and are strategically, which are strategically placed along I-70 and I-135, border to border, inviting travelers to discover the pride of the prairie, in the heart of Kansas and within the heartbeat of Salina. TripAdvisor, one of the leading travel organizations, ranks Rolling Hills Zoo as a number one of things to do in Salina with 259 reviews and a 4.5-star rating. But don't let me do all the talking. Let's hear from some of our guests who recently posted the following comments on Google Review. "Great zoo. The new Pride of the Prairie is excellent, and the lioness clearly enjoy their new space, and you can actually see them. The rhinoceruses are up close and personal in the barn. Rolling Hills Zoo has an attax, an antelope you don't see at other zoos, as well as a scimitar oryx extinct in the wild. The farm animals in kids' country aren't the usual ones, and some of them will even let you scratch their heads. The wildlife museum is outstanding and worth the trip. The employees are so kind and thoughtful. Beautiful zoo. Animals look well cared for. We went on a 101-degree day, so we didn't stay as long as we'd like. We are from the Topeka area, and this zoo surpasses Topeka Zoo by far. The museum afterwards to cool down was also a beautiful experience." And another. "We have been to so many zoos. This by far is one of the prettiest, best-kept places. Animals are well cared for in clean enclosures, beautiful landscaping, and an artistic museum." Second time visiting Rolling Hills Zoo, and both times were wonderful experiences. Second time visiting Rolling Hills Zoo, and both times were wonderful experiences. Both times we rode the tram, both times the tram was well worth it. This year, our tram operator Ron was an excellent guide. He was very knowledgeable of the animals and the exhibits. And after a ride on the tram on a hot day, walking through the well-air-conditioned museum was perfect. They have a great variety of animals, well-spaced out in large enclosures. This facility is well-maintained and being upgraded regularly. I'm sure we'll visit again in the future. And finally, rhinos are my favorite animal. So to see a seven-month white rhino trying to convince its tired mama it's time to play was well worth the price of admission and the option to round up the amount for animal conservation. Love the museum. I also like being able to buy paintings done by the animals. The option to take the tram to save some walking was awesome on a 100-degree day. I'll definitely come back. In closing, I want to invite you to come out to see our new Pride of the Prairie exhibit if you have not already had a chance to do so, as well as to see our young rhino calf, Gus, and also our newest species, the cassowary. So we'd love to see you there. Thank you for taking, for your role in making arts and culture a priority in Salina, and by doing so, you are positively impacting the lives in our own community. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynda. The zoo has done a wonderful job over the years of sharing that postcard resource with the other culturels, many of these in the room who cooperate on that and help get the word out and reflect the community in some great ways. And it just shows how all of these organizations are able to partner outside of their own agencies and silos and work together to reflect Salina even better. The last group that we're going to hear from right now is from the Stiefel Theater. Jane was out of town at a conference, and so April Decker is going to be presenting today. So, thank you, April.
Yeah, Jane is at a booking conference in Nashville right now, so she's hopefully coming back with exciting things on our lineup. But, so I'm standing in, and hopefully I'll do an okay job. Since we've been able to start recovering from the COVID pandemic, we've been able to bring a large variety of shows through again. We've brought people from all over the country. We've brought some people from as far away as from Hawaii the past few years. Prior to COVID, I'd met some folks from Iceland that had come over to the Stiefel, as well as a pair from England. And they didn't come just for our concerts, but they did come to our concerts while they were in town. The majority of our folks that come to our concerts, about 75% are from out of the Salina area. We market a lot to the state of Kansas, but we also market to Nebraska, Oklahoma, Missouri, and Colorado quite a bit. Then on social media, we market everywhere. Anyone that likes a band can see our advertising. A lot of these folks then come to Salina, go out to eat. The hotels tell us that they always know when there's a show at the Stiefel because they're just all packed. Restaurants are at capacity on our show nights most of the time. And then we also, whenever we can, we like to donate tickets to organizations. We partner with Ashby House, D-VAC, Salina Rescue Mission, and give them tickets whenever we can. We also donate tickets to fundraising events for schools, 4H, that kind of thing, so that way they can hopefully bring in some more, some more money to their organizations. We also do an annual performance every year, well, we did prior to COVID, for the second and third graders at USD 305. This year, since we haven't been able to do it for two years, we're doing two performances, one in the fall and one in the spring. We bring the second and third graders over, bust them over, and then National Touring Act does a performance, a theater performance for them, and then we bust them back. We've also just recently started having the Mike Finnegan School of Music available for students, kids all the way through adults. We've had people as old as about 70 and as young as eight enroll in our music school. And we've been able to use some of the carm funding to advertise not just the music school, but not just our shows, but to advertise some of the other organizations in the area. We spend, all that money goes straight back into the marketing. And yeah, I guess, and we just, we like to partner with a lot of different organizations as well. I mean, we just had the Feast on the Fay folks use our space as a prep area. We partner with Acoustic Sounds whenever we can, because, you know, in the music business, it works pretty well that way. And then we partner with Salina Symphony whenever we can. And I guess that's about all I've got on my list. But yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, April. And the first, yeah, kind of in summary for this portion, 199,000, just, I was trying to add another organization that wasn't here just to get us over 200. But rest assured, cultural attractions, this, this number does not include the River Festival and, and other projects that are privately done around the cultural arts. And, and in particular, the 108,784 from outside of 67401, for these organizations that are receiving carm funding, that's a pretty substantial return on investment to know that it's making a difference in the regional market. Locally, $8 million in budgeting for those organizations, and as they reported, a good deal of that stays right here in Salina. That's a big deal also, and we'll look at those numbers in a little bit. And equally important are, is the human factor. 63 full-time employees and another 62 part-time collectively just from these five organizations. And, and these five represent about half of the group, a little less than half of what make up the Cultural Roundtable, or the group that meets every month to kind of discuss direction and ideas and strategies and coordinating support for each other and learning how, how to continue to work together. Because they were so good with timing, we're a few minutes ahead of schedule, and to be fair to them and to you, you just heard quite a bit from them. So we could take about 10 minutes right now if you had some questions for any one of the presenters, and then we'll move on to the next part of the program. Commissioner Longback?
I guess I'm a little unclear, the portion of funding that comes from the city for these, the community theater, the symphony, the Stiefel.
I'll do my best to, it's not an easy answer because it comes from a variety of sources. Some, and, and those are listed, and I gave the wrong number on one of these, but number five is the, on each of the profiles lists the approximate value of services, whether that's in-kind, carm, it's, it's city-based funding. The symphony probably receives the lowest because of the carm program they've been involved with. So, so when they have particular shows that they want to reach a regional, a stronger regional audience and utilize those funds, it's a matching fund to help support regional marketing through the transient guest tax. There is a sheet at the very end of your page, the last page in your packet, that goes over a spreadsheet of funding that the Finance Director provided. So that'll give you kind of a quick total summary there. But some of that is cash and some of that is in-kind, depending on the organization. So what I felt is important, at least on an annual basis, is for these organizations to have a chance to tell you about the, the impact that they're having on community when public funding is involved at all. And, and I might also mention, there are some communities that a local art center and a theater and a performing arts hall are all under the management and administration of the municipality. I think we're operating at a far higher level because we're not following that model. The minimal, proportionally minimal support for these organizations to thrive and, and do what they do without it all being under a city umbrella makes us stronger as a community.
Sounds like you're saying the government would probably ruin it.
I, I just think there's a capacity that government has, and, and when, when the private and public sector come together to mutual benefit of the community, we operate quite well.
Yeah, it is, you know, a good partnership. And what's very impressive is the, the private funding and contributions that go into all these programs. I don't know how much goes into the Art Center, but every place else has a lot of, lot of support.
Each of those organizations provided the, the earned revenue and the private contributions that they, they, that they generate. And it is substantial, and we're blessed to live in such a generous community.
And I would say, in regards to symphony, my childhood friend Eddie Stein is just really impressed with everything going on here, and he can't wait to move back. So you'll get him full-time one of these days.
Mr. Lankowitz?
No questions.
I have three questions, all short from Mr. Spicer. I was trying to pick up my cell phone to figure out what a cassowary is. I didn't know if that was a trivia question, if one of us got a prize if we could figure it out before you all left.
What a what was?
And did I say it right? Castle, cassoway?
Cassowary.
Cassowary.
Yes.
I'm truly confused.
Mr. Spicer going to define that?
It's a zoo question. A cassowary is a...
Be at the mic, so for the...
A cassowary is a bird native from Australia. It walks on two legs. It has a blue face. It has a helmet, and it is a relative to the vector raptor, so it's the closest connection that we have to dinosaurs. And it also has a deadly dagger claw. It can kill a human, and has.
Thank God we don't have one at the theater.
Might be a new prop to do that.
I'm not storing it in my office.
Right. First, congratulations on your 25 years. That's fantastic that one theater has kept a director that long.
And, and we've also kept our technical director, lighting designer for 23 years. So I think, as most organizations know, when you're able to keep good people at the core like Adrian at, at the symphony, it really makes a huge difference in being able to have trust within the community. They know who the face is, they know who they can come to when they want to donate or when they want to complain.
Right. I've seen a lot of good shows there, but anytime you want to reprise Kinky Boots with that cast, I will buy 100 tickets. That, just by far and away, I think, the most fun show I've seen. That was great. Could you explain briefly the reason for the name change? I've heard it, but I have a feeling there are a lot of folks in town who don't know.
I can't. This is, this was about two years' worth of discussion and having personal conversations and lunches with longtime volunteers and people who are important to the history of the theater. When we began talking about this, we discussed different kinds of names, some of them being very different, but we've always come back to Salina as being an incredibly important part of this. Our mission has changed significantly. We are far more regional and national in our patronage. We are an eight-time national award-winning community theater. And whether we choose to admit it to ourselves or not, there is a bit of a pejorative sense with the word "community." It's like Little Theater. When people come to the theater and they walk into the, to the lobby, the first thing they say is, "I didn't realize it was going to be so big." And I don't know how many of you know Mike Payne, but Mike has brought a lot of people and friends of his in to see things. And when he says, "Well, it was Salina Community Theater," they would always go, "Oh, I don't know about that." So the reason that we made, one of the reasons that we made the change was we, we, we know that the people in Salina and our patrons, our, our subscribers, know that the quality of what we do is not going to change. If anything, it's going to get better in the future because we're dedicated to that kind of quality. And what we're trying to do, because we know that the greatest growth potential for us is regional, statewide, and all of the surrounding states, removing that last little hesitation by taking that word out of it, it really represents more of the quality that the theater has been committed to for the last 62 years, but I promise you, certainly the last 25 years, we have worked diligently to improve not only what we do, but the quality of what we do. And so bringing new people in, as we said, the last two musicals, which have fallen under the new name, have been 49% outside of our 67401, 67402, and 45%. And we're looking forward to all of our shows beginning to achieve that kind of, that kind of patronage regionally and statewide.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. A division of Salina Arts and Humanities, as you know, is the Smoky Hill Museum. And I've asked Susan Hawsworth to come and share a little bit about some pieces of that, especially on the public-private side, that we don't often get a chance to, to talk to you about and, and its impact. So, Susan?
Hi, I'm glad to be here. Everyone else talked about the impact of the arts on the community, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about your impact on the arts, as well as some private funding that we get to help with that impact. As some of you know, we had our largest event in September, on September 24th, I saw some of you there, for our street fair. That is a event that is a Friends of the Smoky Hill Museum and City-partnered event. The cost to put that event on this year was just over $19,400, and 55% of that was paid for by sponsorships through the Friends organization. So they put in a lot of the income to help us reach such a large crowd, and with the weather, the way it was, the, we had attendance of over 700, 7,700 people. So over 7,700 people came out to that event, either to watch the parade, come down and enjoy the activities, or go through the museum itself. And that's up 41% over last year. So we've, I think, recovered from COVID on our street fair event. That's about what we were hitting before it happened in 2020. I would also say that we could not put that event on without our volunteers. We had over 64 volunteers who put in just under, just a smidge under 200 hours for that day to help put that event on. And if you go online and look to see what the value of a volunteer is, that's, it's about $29.95 an hour, what they figure for volunteers. So that saved the city $5,958.55 to have those 64 volunteers help us put that event on. Our other biggest event that we do, and it's not really an event, it's, our exhibits are some of our biggest things. And our next exhibit, we actually extended our current exhibit of Let's Play through November because of the popularity. It has driven gate numbers at the museum over pre-COVID numbers, so we have fully recovered from that. And our next exhibit will open in December, mid-December, and it's called Fire in the Embers of Discovery. This exhibit looks at historic fires that have impacted the fire safety through investigation and evidence, and how that led to changes in preventions, construction codes, legislation, policies, and procedures. Salina had three fires that correspond to three nationally known fires that helped shape national fire safety ordinances and regulations. Those fires had a similar impact here in our community as well. The fires that we're investigating in this exhibit are the Sad Yule, which was December 24th, 1871, which burned part of downtown Salina. And that corresponds to the Great Chicago Fire of October 8th through 10th in 1871 that burnt the majority of Chicago. Fire of October 8th through 10th in 1871 that burnt the majority of Chicago. The Lee Fire, which happened on December 4th in 1903, corresponds to the Chicago's Iroquois Theater Fire, which happened that same month, later that same month in 1903. And then the barn at the Roosevelt Lincoln Junior High School campus burned December 11th, 1861. And that corresponds to Our Lady of Angels School Fire, which also ironically was in Chicago, which was December 1st in 1958. So those are the fires we're investigating. This, we did work with the fire department on these. We worked with their historian to get background on the local fires. We also had the fire chief Snyder read through our script to make sure that we were presenting things accurately as well. And then we are going to be working with the department to put together our guest list for when we do that exhibit opening so that we can invite some of the fire department guests to that as well. And then finally, I want to talk about the support that the Friends of the Smoky Hill Museum provide for the city and for, for the museum and the city. The purpose of the Friends of the Smoky Hill Museum is to promote and support the activities that, that we carry on at the museum. And they have been a partner since 1988. The Friend Board also plays a vital volunteer role for the museum. Not only are they in charge of running the organization, they provide a sounding board for our ideas. They help promote the museum out into the community and also help provide other volunteer hours outside of the boardroom as well. Annually, the Friends of the Museum play, paid $12,500 towards a staff position, one of our museum assistant positions, to help with the running of the museum store, which is all owned by the Friends of the Museum. But city staff does provide the staffing for that. So they help provide some of the funding for that position. They are also a fundraising arm for whenever we do a major gallery renovation, which they did in 2006 for the main gallery, and then again in 2015, 2017 for the Curiosity Shop. And I'm sure we'll be doing another, it's getting close to time to renovate the galleries again. So I'm sure they'll play a very significant role whenever that comes about as well. And in addition, they contribute on average about $9,400 over the past four years for other museum projects. Some of those are readily seeable by the communities with the benches and planners out in front of the museum, which are widely used during the street fair and other times of the year. They also have provided much more comfortable chairs for our famous, for our favorite first Thursday presentations. People now can get up and walk after sitting in them for an hour as opposed to stumbling about in those hard metal chairs we used to have. Most recently, they helped buy a microfilm reader for the museum so that we can use various microfilms, either of the Salina Journal and others, items that have been donated to the museum for research whenever we do our exhibit research and artifact research. They also provided a large format scanner for our archives to minimize the handling of objects. We can scan those and not have to get them out all the time we want to look at them. They also provided a trailer, which is used by both halves of the, the department. This, museum uses it to go pick up large artifacts, if any are donated, as well as for setup and tear down a street fair. It's a humongous help in that. And the Arts Division has used it for River Festival and other activities as well. And finally, the, Friends are helping the museum reach an even broader audience by, they provided funding to start our first traveling exhibit, which is In the Trenches. It's a World War I exhibit. It has been out since December of 2021. It has been booked constantly through then and is booked through, we've only started booking in 2024, but it is constantly being booked and travels throughout the various communities in Kansas, especially the smaller rural communities. And our next exhibit, Notorious, will be going out, we hope, by the end of this year as well. And we hope will be just as popular. And with that, I am finished. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, yes.
Number one, who won the chili cook-off contest?
Oh, you would ask me, and I can't think of their name. It was, number two, I can't even think of the-
The church-
The church group out there.
Out on West Cloud.
Yes. I can't think of the translation of their church name either, but the church-
Hispanic, wasn't it? It was Hispanic, wasn't it?
Yes, yes. Yeah. So it's a Spanish name and I can't, I just cannot remember the name of it. They won the People's Choice and booth, chili group number three, can't remember their name either, won Best Decorated Booth.
Los Cabaneros?
No, Habanero, Habanero something.
Yeah.
Yeah, won Best Decorated Booth.
You didn't expect that question, did you?
I didn't. I would have looked at the names again, yeah.
You mentioned the microfiche-
Microfilm.
From the journal.
Yes, the journal, when they moved, actually donated all of their roles.
All that information?
We do. The Public Library also possesses a copy, but the, when the journal moved their offices, they donated all of their roles to us. So we have that on site and don't have to travel to the library to use that.
So people can access it at the museum?
It's used for staff use only. The microfilm reader is in a staff office, but the Public Library has it for the public.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm glad that was preserved.
Yeah.
You might mention the negatives also. Right, we've got-
Oh, yes. And before, right when Tom Dorsey was retiring, he arranged for all the photographic negatives being held by the Salina Journal are now in the possession of the City of Salina in the archives. We have not taken on the huge task of digitizing those yet, but we can look them up and digitize. There's a kind of a directory to those various images that we can look and try to find. Not everything is where it's supposed to be, of course, with, oh, several hundred boxes of negatives, but-
That was everything the journal had?
The negatives that they still are currently own. We did not get any copies of their digital archives, which was started after 2000. We have like from 86 to 2000 of-
Interesting. I'm probably in a few of them pictures.
You probably are.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. In, in summary to this portion, the, I'm going to say something briefly about the, some of the percentages and the numbers that are here. These come, these are national numbers that are trusted, quoted, peer-reviewed from Americans for the Arts. The City of Salina participated in an Americans for the Arts program back in 2005, I believe, or '06, on an Arts and Economic Prosperity Survey. And we have direct information. Many of the organizations that are here also participated in that. It was rigorous questioning of every citizen who came through one of the events. And how much did you spend? Did you get a babysitter? How far did you come from? How many days did you stay? What else did you do? And, and that information is collated to be able to provide some very trustworthy numbers based on geographies. It's not just, oh, well, those are all LA numbers and they're inflated for Kansas. It's, it's better data than that. And it's across geographic and demographic lines all across the country. The same with audience surveys that they do. They have gathered thousands of surveys from across the country to get a pulse, a feeling of where things are. And, and a quick aside, to know just how accurate some of those are, at a time that the rest of the public was in the upper 80s to low 90s in answering a question of, do you value the role the arts play in your life? Nationally, that, that high 80s, low 90s number, Salina was at about 55%. And that was also correlated to the peak of the contentiousness with public art and, and some of the negative editorials and, and community fervor that went around that. And with everyone's help, including sculpture tour and new community education, outreach, connections, and, and I think more transparency, those numbers are, are back to closer to where the national numbers are. So I, I just, I want to make sure that you're aware that, that these aren't just make-believe or another dead stat. And if nothing else, I hope they give you the confidence of knowing that, that the public does expect and benefits from engagement in arts and culture in their community. And it's a majority. While there, there may be some folks who take exception to it or, or suggest that there's always a pothole to be filled instead of any public funding for the arts. I would, I hope this equips you to be able to say, "Well, just a minute." There are many others who also feel this is important as well. So with that, we're going to drill down just a little bit and go into a couple of our more specific programs and introduce some things that we haven't talked a lot with you about. And partly because of that private-public partnership, much like the museum has, the Friends of the Smoky Hill Museum as a, as a funding partner, as a support and advocate body, we have the Arts Commission, but we also have, through the wisdom and leadership at the, at the city, along with the Foundation for Arts and Humanities, we have a foundation that's also responsible for private fundraising. They're not my boss, but they also, but they do provide a significant amount of money annually through the work our staff does and that they do on our behalf to allow us to raise private funds for the festival and for the Horizons Grant Program. Horizon started in 1986 as a privately funded granting program for organizations and individual artists. To the best of my knowledge, I ask every time I'm out and at conferences and other places in Kansas and connecting with others, I believe it's still the only privately funded artist grant program for individual artists in the state and maybe in some of the surrounding states. There's lots of grants for arts and cultural organizations through other sources, but they usually draw the line at individual artists. And so having this program that serves both individual developing artists and organizations is really unique and important for Salina. Go ahead. There are three different grants that we administrate as an office. One is for up to $1,000, but most often they're $500 enrichment grants. We just, we had not moved that amount in more than 20 years. So we raised it to 1,000 for some special circumstances for individual artists, not for organizations. And, and those are available as funding allows. We do about $8,000 worth of these a year. And they're, they're for kind of emerging opportunities, things that might help in the professional development of an artist or to help an organization that is just getting started. But, but they're typically smaller in nature and they don't require a match. The other two, the organizational project grants are up to $6,000. And I believe all of the organizations that are here today have been recipients of, of those. And those are a one-to-one match. So every grant dollar is matched by the organization dollar. And an important component of those is that some aspect of that program helps reach or connect with community. The, the community benefit is part of the, the scoring or the jurying of that. We bring in professional peers to, with, with experience or background in the areas that the applicants come from and, and ask for their advice and, and scoring to help make an informed decision for the foundation board to ratify. The staff at, I think it's the city manager's approval or actually it was this governing body. The way this kind of works on the private-public side, the Horizons checks are written from the foundation to the individual artists. But when the foundation was formed and in agreement with the city commission and, and administered through the city manager's office, I'm authorized to work on behalf of the foundation in the administration of that grants program. So again, it just, just like you face a lot of public-private things, this is kind of one of those unique twists. And it's only taken me about 12 years to figure out how to explain that even poorly. The, let's see, you want to go back one, Jacob? Yeah. The individual artists or the developing artist grants are up to $2,000. And that's a one-part individual artist money to two parts from the grant. So if they apply for 3,000 or a $2,000 grant, then they need to come up with about $700 as a, as a personal match to, to get that full amount. And the, as, as indicated up there, there are professional jury panels, with the exception of the enrichment grants. Those are small enough, our staff will sometimes call out to another consultant or someone with, with direct experience in an area we're not comfortable. But on those smaller amounts, we don't spend administrative money bringing an outsider in and we try to turn those a little faster. Okay, you can go ahead. What's the impact of this? This little grants program, and, and by the way, it's about $30,000 a year that we spend or in, in the Horizons budget. Again, all privately raised, no public funding is used other than the staff time to help administrate the program. This, this grants program is fully paid for by private donors. And the impact of that since 1986, you can see, $1.77 million awarded to 600 individuals and organizations. Some of those organizations have been to the well multiple times. So it's not 600 different individuals. Some, some are repeats. It's once a year that folks are eligible. And we do keep track in the, in the applicant's final reports to say, how many people were impacted? How many people were touched by this program? And more than half a million. With matching funds, and again, on the community impact to go along with what others have said, $3.3 million additional money is leveraged for those programs. Many organizations spend far more than their required match in order to bring something together. The cost of the symphonies, the amount that we provide to Symphony and, and then what their budget is for a particular show or any one of the other organizations is much higher, but the grant does help with that. Go ahead. The, the, the next area that we're going to talk about is arts education, except- Can you go one more? Okay, yeah, go ahead and go back. I, I had a note that I was maybe going to move that one further, but Sarah is here. So our arts education coordinator is going to talk to you a little bit about, about what all we're doing with that program. So.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Keck, Arts Education Coordinator at Salina Arts and Humanities. My primary roles are coordinating the Arts Infusion Program and coordinating entertainment for the Smoky Hill River Festival. I'd like to direct your attention to the green guides that you should have up there. We also have extra copies for anyone in the audience or community that would like to see them. Specifically, I'd like to direct your attention to pages three and page seven. Both of those either have an overview of the data from last year, or it gives you kind of an overview of the artists that we have participating, including some of the local cultural organizations that are partnering with us. Arts Infusion is an education program that partners visiting and local teaching artists with the educators and students within Salina. Educators can select curriculum-based sessions that teach a variety of subjects, including social studies, visual arts, science, and more. The teaching artists present curriculum-based content, but they happen to use arts education practices as a vehicle. As the Americans for the Arts report indicates, arts improve academic performance and students engaged in arts have a higher GPAs, standardized test scores, and their college-going rates are higher as well as a lower in dropout rates. These academic benefits are reaped by students across all socioeconomic strata, yet the Department of Education reports that access to arts education for students of color is significantly lower than their white peers. There is near universal support for arts education. 91% agree that arts are part of a well-rounded education and over 90% say that arts should be taught continuously from elementary- be taught continuously from elementary through high school. The Arts Infusion Program here in Salina provides content for students pre-K through 12 throughout the school year. Accommodation options are also available to make sure that these sessions are accessible to students regardless of their socioeconomic status or their disability status. The program puts a lot of focus on providing opportunities for economically disadvantaged schools within Salina and making public events free for all. USD 305 invests annually in Arts Infusion, and that totals one-third of the overall budget, with the city contributing the remaining two-thirds. As you will notice on page three of the guide, 2021 saw 11,356 student contacts, and Arts Infusion contacts are figured consecutively. So let's say you have one artist that offers sessions, maybe in science and social studies, and students were able to see both, they were counted as two separate contacts. So what we're doing is we're going out into the schools with sessions that are designed to partner with the curriculum that educators are using in the classroom. And this helps provide experiences that are positive, collaborative, inspirational, and challenging. Referring to the report again, 89% say that the arts should also be taught outside of the classroom inside, or out in the community. Visiting artists often perform community events and workshops that are free to the public to attend as well. For example, tonight we have Drum Safari, led by Brandon and Taryn Draper. They are here currently visiting schools in Salina and will be here today and tomorrow. Drum Safari will be collaborating with Cash Hollister with a performance tonight at Campbell Plaza. Later in this presentation, you're going to hear more about the performances for this fall, and there will be a series of workshops coming up in the spring. This program also partners with local cultural organizations, as I mentioned. This year includes sessions from Friends of the River, Salina Arts Center, Theater Salina, and the Salina Symphony. You may have recognized some of the artwork in the guide. This actually is from the murals in the community over in Artwork Alley that are created in May of this year. The Arts Infusion Guide also provides the community members with information about local cultural organizations and community resources. So it's a great single location with information on ways to engage with these groups that significantly impacts Salina's culture, entertainment, educational opportunities, and economics. This makes the guide both an educational resource as well as a workforce recruitment and retention tool. We often provide copies to many board members and business leaders in Salina for this purpose. For those that are wanting more information about the Arts Infusion Program, information is located under the Programs tab on our website, salinaarts.org, or by contacting Salina Arts and Humanities located on the second floor of Smoky Hill Museum. Thank you.
Sarah had enough to offer that I printed her comments, and they're in your packet as well. So if you, wait a minute, what was that about? A quick piece of history about our organization or its development. In 1966, when Arts and Humanities was founded, the city commission gave a chunk of money to the Salina Arts Commission. And that private body met and distributed funds throughout the year for a visiting artist program. And for the first few years, that was largely what it was. It was the first year that the National Endowment for the Arts was set, and we were early as a city agency within state government to have that funded and supported through the city. It only took a few years that the first staff member was hired, and a few years after that, that funds were, about the time that the festival was five years old or so, the office decided, let's move this budget money from visiting artists to teaching artists and work within the community and the education system. And the program that Sarah is managing now is working on about its third iteration since education started, but the importance of supplementing Salina's K-12 education and the parochial schools is really important. And the National Dad is also saying that people want to continue to learn well into adulthood or their senior years. And so having this opportunity for her to manage visiting artists that come in or local artists with public benefit like tonight is really important. So with that, we're going to move into another area of our programming that takes quite a bit of time, and that's public art. A lot of time, energy, and some money, depending on the year and the capital improvement projects and so on. But our art services coordinator is relatively new to the department, and so I'll let her introduce herself.
Thank you, commissioners, for having me today. My name is Crystal Amerschmidt, and I'm the Art Services Coordinator with Arts and Humanities. One of my major responsibilities is the visual coordinator for the Smoky Hill River Festival, so I get to work with a lot of different artists on multiple projects. I want to remind everyone that public artwork and various types of integrated design projects visible to the public, whether they're publicly or privately funded, are a very democratic way to engage our community with the arts. Public art does not discern who you are, where you come from, or how much money you have, but it is a great opportunity to start conversations in and about our community. Public art can often surprise the viewer as they encounter it in unexpected or non-traditional venues. The work often reflects and reveals the personal values ingrained in our society and has the power to enhance your experience in a community or a public space. Art as a visual mechanism and outward expression for understanding diverse viewpoints also enhances our visual landscape. The artists at the core of this discussion are an integral part of this process. By encouraging public art initiatives, we're validating an ecosystem that places the value that they work, or places value on the work that they do. As I said, I'm a new employee with Arts and Humanities, and I understand how important the history of our work is and using that as a resource for our forward momentum. I've been looking back at the Big Ideas, which was a cultural assessment and plan created in 2008. Goal number two within that plan was to make our community a more beautiful place to live, work, and visit. And as I read through that vision that they had for 2020, it was really clear to me that the community took those evaluations and recommendations seriously. Many of the citywide accomplishments and public art were grown from seeds planted many years ago. Martha Ray was the director of the Salina Arts and Humanities for 30 years, so generously welcomed me into her home, sharing her own collection of artwork reflecting very personal and vivid memories. We sat and candidly discussed the importance and responsibility of promoting the visual arts for this entire community. I understand that one of her proudest achievements was the start of the public art collection, marking the 25th anniversary of the Smoky Hill River Festival. Now, to date, we have at least 230 works in the public collection that was collected over the past 20 years. That represents a true investment in the arts economy. Within Salina's public schools, there's more than a dozen integrated art and design elements that honor both the collective spirit of a classroom and those individual schools. We commit funding to these projects, special opportunities arise for collaboration, leaving a lasting mark in a shared space. And for the artists, they're often stretching themselves in their processes with a new challenge to work in a community in a way or at a scale which they haven't worked before. The city commits a percentage of capital improvement funding to integrated artwork and design. This allows even the newest state-of-art facilities to incorporate visual elements that are distinctive to anyone who drives by. Incorporating these elements at entry points to our city, we also leave a lasting impression on those who live here and come to visit. I personally believe there are unique and dynamic relationships working together between the public and private sectors to fund the public art initiatives. Since 2001, Sculpture Tour has displayed over 250 sculptures for public viewing. The city now has 11 People's Choice Award winners as part of our public collection. But that in itself does not represent or account for the additional investments made by private purchases for works that are also being integrated in and around our downtown area. In addition to the Sculpture Tour, a growing number of walls in the downtown area have been transformed by murals, and both by local and international artists are participating in this transformation. Earlier this year, as Sarah mentioned, the Kansas Creative Arts Industries Commission, along with some funding by the National Endowment of the Arts, awarded a grant to support the Make-A-Mark mural initiative. Right now, Boom Salina, the Street Art and Mural Festival is underway, transforming another five walls in the downtown area. Artists are creating exciting new imagery to beautify our public spaces. And as I mentioned earlier, this is one of those surprising, non-traditional venues where you can engage with the artists as they create in real time, which is something we don't usually get to do. The city is uniquely positioned to work as a resource partner for those sorts of activities and events. Having financial support makes it possible, especially for the Arts and Humanities, to continue aligning local artists with professional opportunities such as sculpture tour and public murals. As the work continues, the Community Art and Design Committee is revisiting those big ideas I mentioned earlier. We also have a short survey to gather some community feedback in response to the public art and its impact on our community. As October is Arts and Humanities Month, we're going to keep the survey open and available through the end of the month. It is on our Community Art and Design and our Arts and Humanities Facebook pages, and we will be putting that available at a number of other media sources. So as I end on a personal note, I understand not everyone in my community has equal access to the arts. I genuinely believe that for all, I genuinely believe that art is for all. And as a city, we can work towards a more inclusive, creative community. I'm honored to be a part of this team at the Arts and Humanities, where we work to make the arts accessible to the public, and I thank the city for its continued commitment to public art initiatives.
Thanks, Crystal. As indicated here, you know, to have 70% of the public involved in some kind of arts or cultural event or experience in the last year is quite remarkable. And we're blessed to have so much available for the individual tastes and experiences that people are looking for. Some are writers, some are actors, some are musicians, some are just consumers of those creative acts, and being able to have all of that makes a huge, huge difference. Go ahead. This is the other duties as assigned portion of our conversation today. Long before I took over as director, the staff at Arts and Humanities had said, oh, well, we're a resource partner. We're a resource partner for this, we're a resource partner for that. And over the last couple of years, our staff, as we've gone through transition change and COVID and other things as well, we've started asking that question of what exactly does a resource partner do? And if somebody said, oh, well, that sounds like a nice description, but what's that It's not Arts and Humanities, but a resource partner is a previous curator of collections at the museum got a call after someone had experienced a house fire, and in the putting out of the fire, their family Bible and heirloom was damaged, was soaked. And they called the museum to say, is there anything I can do? And I think through the advice of that curator to put it in the freezer, get it, there's some protocol, and Susan may have better knowledge than I do of it. But being able to have someone on a phone or at a table or to be able to help connect the desires, the needs, the challenges that artists, that organizations, or that individuals in the community and businesses face, having a professionally staffed department makes a huge difference. And oftentimes, we're referring people out to one of the organizations that just presented to you here. So resource partnerships in our, and I'm not going to read a PowerPoint slide to you, but we will be further articulating this. We've got about six pages of explanations that are under each one of these bullets that kind of define what our relationship is to individual artists and their professional development, what our role is as an advocate, both locally and regionally, to help promote the arts or to promote arts education, and that advocacy role that isn't lobbying necessarily, but that helps equip others to understand, much like we're doing here with you today, to help you have a better understanding of the impact of the arts on the community. We need to do a lot more of that as we move forward. The other thing that we're looking at, and it's come up time and time again, four of our staff just participated in the Kansas Leadership Center's two-day professional development last week. And as we heard the challenges that other businesses are facing and wanting to have different outcomes but not bringing new things to the table, it became really clear that the arts have a lot to offer to our business and professional community, to be able to help them maybe face creative problems or associations with how to engage staff in a deeper way, how to attract and retain employees using creative expression and many things that come with the arts that the normal protocols or the HR manuals don't always have. And so we're, being a resource partner means that we're going to be looking at these things as we move forward. Go ahead. As we get towards the end here, the arts meaning business, the 3147 per person, that's two-year-old numbers, or actually, it was, it wasn't, these weren't numbers from COVID. The per-person spending went down, as you might imagine during COVID, but these are the last trusted numbers that we can have. 3147 per person, per event, beyond the cost of admission. So every single person who walks through the art center's door, they may not hire a babysitter, get a hotel, or do something else, but collectively, I want you to keep that dollar amount in mind, because we're going to look at it another way here in just a second. And I can't remember, I think it was Misty that talked about the state impact, but $876 billion industry that supports $4.6 million jobs across the country. That's more than the transportation sector. It's more than public accounting. If you take all the accountants in America, they don't do that much. It's a significant industry in the state. And again, nearly 90% or 86% believe facilities, cultural facilities are important to business and the economy. All you have to do is look at what Tim has done at Prickly Pearsons, it's opening, to see the number of nights on the weekends, especially. He has programmed live entertainment at that stage, because programming drives business. Now, programming might be a wine walk, it might be a sidewalk sale, it might be another special event or a parade of lights. All of those programming things help, but the programming that this group provides drives business to the downtown. And I may be the only one who believes it, but my guess is the $250-plus million of downtown redevelopment that's taking place would not be happening if it wasn't for the strength of the cultural sector that is centered in the downtown and throughout Salina. I think it was a tremendous catalyst for that, to have the ability to go forward and will continue to be as it goes forward. Go ahead. Breakdown on that per-person spending, $16 a person on meals and snacks, $1.92 on clothing and accessories. I want you to go back and every one of those dollars that you see here of that 3147, and remember what that number was early in the program. 199,000 people times that. It's a big deal. And also remember that the 199,000 is low. That's not, that's not all of us. I'd love to find a way to be able to capture when parents and grandparents and others come in for high school drama shows and other cultural programming throughout the community. It's a substantial number. Go ahead. Along the job front, creativity, people are looking for creative expression. Half of Americans do some kind of a creative act. Sing, write, draw, paint, dance. 50% have reported in the last, in the 2022 survey that Americans for the Arts did, are engaged in some kind of creative performance. And a direct tie to the workplace, if if they can feel creative within the workplace, if they can, if they can stretch their thinking, their engagement, their interaction with others, they feel better and find more success in that. And we're quietly going about that business. But I just, I can't imagine Salina without this group. And if you look through a visitor's guide, advertising, marketing, and you just blocked out everything that had to do with the cultural arts and said, welcome to Salina, be a distinctly different community. Go ahead. Looking ahead, you're the first group to hear this publicly, but Salina has agreed. Salina Arts and Humanities is going to be hosting a 2023 conference here with the Kansas Arts Council Symposium. Directors of Arts Councils, nonprofits, and arts organizations from all across the state will be coming here next fall, hopefully during another mural festival and an opening night for a theater and, and an art center exhibit. We'll be working with our cultural partners to try to find the best time to do that in late September or early October. But we've been invited and accepted the opportunity to do that. And it'll bring quite a few folks here for a couple of days to be able to see just how well things are going. Go ahead. Finally, in your packets, and we've got some up here for any of our audience members that are interested. I want to take a second to share with you. Again, I'm going to put my foundation hat back on. In addition to the annual fundraising for the Smoky Hill River Festival and, and other private funding and grant making that, or grant writing that we do to help supplement city dollars, we've taken on in the last year a pretty important project and one that I won't see the full benefits of during my tenure here and maybe during my life in Salina, depending on how long I get to keep breathing. But we've set a $10 million goal for an endowment. And an endowment is, is a, is a safety net that the organization gets to draw 5% off roughly annually to, to help supplement income and/or to guarantee programming. And to put that as an example, we spend 40 to 50% of our time as a staff annually operating the River Festival. And the bulk of my time in that effort is fundraising. And if we had $3 million in an endowment for the Smoky Hill River Festival, that 5% would generate just about what our staff responsibility is for raising that cash budget for that event every year. And if I could start, or if a future director could start January 1st with $150,000 in the bank and say, let's get at it, that would free up $150,000 in the community to support other cultural organizations or to help reduce costs of a program or to make something larger or better or, or bolder, or, or to do things that we can't currently do. And so this catalog, this guide is being widely distributed throughout the community and will be used for the next few years to launch the program. And we're hoping that people remember us, especially when they're doing estate planning and planned giving. We're not doing a active capital campaign at this point. We're just going to be patient and ask those who've supported us for so many years to do so, maybe in a bolder way when the time is right. So I'm going to stop right there. And we'll see. Oh, and I do want to remind you that there's, if you had additional budget or funding questions at the end of your report, there, there is a summary of some of the other funding and support that Debbie has provided. So do you have any questions for any of our staff? Or the earlier presenters?
It's not really a question, kind of a comment, that the misconception of the arts, you know, I'm pretty simple-minded. And an example, a year ago, when I visited with Jane Gates that I was running for seat on the commission, she, first question was, what, do you support the arts? And my simple mind, I never considered what goes on at the Stiefel Theater is art. And that's how your average citizens think of art as an object, a painting, that we're wasting money on. And you mentioned the culture facilities. I don't think people realize, I think it's a communication thing, of just what is involved with the arts and the facilities, the education that we have going on here. And, you know, this past year has been an eye-opening experience for me. So, yeah, we're doing a great job. And, you know, I've visited a lot of different other cities, and I tend to stop and admire what's going on with, with the arts and things that really look nice. And we're really stepping things up. Compliment you all on that.
Well, I, I think that it's a shared responsibility. I, I'm appreciative of the city manager and this body being willing to hear from us once a year during Arts and Humanities Month and be able to kind of bring some things up to date or let you know about impact. But we've been so busy in programming over a lot of years that I think that advocacy role, that voice, or, or making sure that the community understands the uniqueness and the value of what we have is really important. And it takes everybody to do that, though. I get paid to say good things about the arts. But our board members and, and some of our other beneficiaries, if they could also help remind you how much they value it, I, I think we'd all be better off and, and we'd hear less negativity about, well, why are we wasting our money on art? When in fact, it makes a huge positive difference on our community.
Could you speak briefly on where someone can go to find out what's going on in town on any given day?
Yes.
Various calendars that we have.
There are, did you hear that word, Michael? We try not to use the C-word with Michael Spicer because calendars, since the Big Ideas was adopted by this body in 2009, we're on about our sixth different community calendar. Back then, it was print, and then it went to a digital, and then it went to Salina Journal, and then it went to another source. The place that all of these organizations put their things in for a one-stop shop, while their individual websites have what they're doing, is Salina A&amp;E. Salina A&amp;E is a calendar that's shared between Arts and Humanities and Visit Salina. And our office helps with those organizations that might not have access to it that do arts programming. But all of these organizations that presented today have access to go directly to that calendar and populate it with, with their programs and events. And so Visit Salina markets and advertises that and pushes that out. And, and we did for the first year or two that it was around, but probably haven't been as vigilant. So, short answer is salinaa&amp;e.com.
Is, it's a ampersand sign or the word and?
Linda? Do you remember whether it's an ampersand or a Salina? Oh, no, Salina AE. Yeah, the, the graphic, there we go.
Oh, up top, okay, thank you.
They can be searched by category or by date or by a variety of other ways. And actually, Jacob, before we take another question, can you go to that last website? I want to, I want to show you very quickly as a tool for you, and I included it in your packets, commissioners, three different pages from this.
But if we could go to, if you could read the fine print, Jacob, can you go to workforce?
This is 26 or so different pieces of our community, of our, of how we operate as a culture.
And you can see everything from immigration, infrastructure, innovation, lifelong learning, livability of a city, equity and inclusion. Every possible category that you might face as commissioner, I would challenge you is up here, transportation and so on. Well, and then click on, if you click on that wheel, it says, learn more. And within that is a brief description of how the arts might impact workforce and workforce development. If you're a business that's saying, gosh, I'm really struggling with my workforce, and you wanted to direct them to a place that might said, you know, that might say, maybe it's time to not have the same consultant come in, but let's look for some creative ways of engaging our workforce. And then click on the fact sheet. Then it provides national data with impact points. It talks about the examples of that across the country, urban and rural areas, but successful programs that have engaged creative practices with workforce development. And then a reading list for those that want to get more data on that. And they have this for every program. This is another Americans for the Arts program. I've included three samples in your packet on the areas that we've been concerned about as a city, and that's housing and economic development. And I think, was the other one workforce, I think? I put those in there just to let you know that, that there are tools available, and we rely on those from time to time to help us lead conversations, inspire others, or direct them to a, a place to say, hey, there's some others who do things in some unique ways. See if you can borrow any ideas from them. And it's, it's a, it's a beautiful resource. So all of that is accessed through?
Through Americans for the Arts. And if you, if, if anybody wanted to Google and typed in social impact explorer, it's going to come up in the top three. But Americans for the Arts, it's a free, it's a free tool, a free service that's available to anyone and is pretty, pretty robust.
Is there a link to that on the Salina AE website?
No, that's a calendar source. We do, and we're, we're just, I'm going to turn to my staff. Did we get our new website up? Might go to salinaarts.com. See if it's live. We will have that as a link on salinaarts.com. We've got a state, local, and national link and resource bank that we're putting in there. And you might click the resources link, but this is a brand-new webpage that we have had in the works, I think, pre-COVID. We have a link to Americans for the Arts there, but we don't have a direct page link to the Impact Explorer, but it is on the Salina Arts webpage. Other questions?
If I could, I'll offer up kind of a concluding observation. The, as an organization, we've supported arts for a long, long time, as Brad's described. And as a community, we have as well. I, I feel like the momentum and the excitement surrounding the arts is heightened as it's been in a long, long time. And Commissioner Longman, to your point, there is community, there has been and there continues to be community conversation about public art and the expense of public art. But I think, you know, a key takeaway from what Brad had to share today is there is a lot of partnership, there's a lot of momentum, there's a lot of investment beyond what the city's doing. Much like we talk about leveraging an investment for a grant application or return on investment on an economic development incentive, we're doing the same thing as it relates to the arts. And so I think people are probably guilty of assuming when they see art that it's been funded by the city or it's been publicly funded, when the vast majority of that is not. It's been supported by our organization in some way. But we have enough interest, enough excitement, enough momentum in the community that it's taking on a life of its own. We continue to invest. It continues to be an expense in terms of the city's operations, but it's not, we are not the only contributor, we're not the only funder, and we are just a partner and a, and a supporter more so than in that lead role. The community is really taking it on, taking that mantle on as a whole, and that's the exciting part.
You know, as, as an example of that, the Studebaker, we don't call it a contest, but show in the German car show is an extension of the arts programming in town. And you look at folks who may not like this type of art, but boy, they were down there looking at the cars, free of charge even.
Yeah, that, when the private sector is doing the bold work that they're doing with us really serving as kind of a, in some cases, a silent partner and other times, a little more engaged. But to have that, that breadth of ownership and financial investment, that's a sign of a healthy community. We're in a good place.
Well, thanks for all of you. We certainly wouldn't be the same without you. So keep working. We will be back at four o'clock. Welcome to the October 10, 2022 Salina City Commission meeting. I'd ask the city clerk if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Linkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
And as you gathered, Commissioners Ryan and Hoppick are not here today. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will start with proclamations.
Item 3.1, recognition of the week of October 16 through the 22nd, 2022, as Friends of the Salina Public Library Week in the city of Salina. Greta Kontas, President of Friends of the Salina Public Library, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Hi there.
You've heard this before, haven't you?
It always sounds better each time.
It's because we just keep getting better.
Better, right.
Whereas Friends of the Salina Public Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's and adult summer reading, scholarships for teen volunteers, and special events throughout the year. Whereas the work of the Friends highlights the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of a well-funded library and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. Whereas the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Trent W. Davis, M.D., Mayor, proclaims the week of October 16th to the 22nd as Friends of the Salina Public Library Week in Salina, Kansas, and urges everyone to join the Friends and thank them for all they do to make our community and library so much better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you, can you tell folks how the Friends either raises money or?
Yes, we act kind of like a booster club for the library, and we, our major fundraiser are used book sales. And we get books not only that the library has pulled that, you know, are no longer checked out, but we have donations from people in the community, and then we have those at a book sale, which is this weekend at bargain prices, okay, in the library, okay? I'm serious, I mean, we have, and we have them all sorted, we have volunteers that sort them by genre, so we have kids' books, adult books, westerns, mysteries, romance, large print, we have audiobooks, games, I mean, yeah. So it really is worth your while to stop by. And then I'd just like to talk real briefly about two major projects that the Friends is helping support this year at the library. One of them is a thousand books before kindergarten for little ones. And when they read a thousand books or read to them, they get a little T-shirt, and you should see them walk around the library with those shirts on, and their pictures are up on the bulletin board down there. And the other one, for those of you who are adult learners, with a library card, you can have access now to Rosetta Stone and learn one of 31 languages on your own time in your own home. That is also, they've made available to the kids in the schools here. Over 8,000 kids in the schools have library cards, special library cards. 35,000 people in our community have a library card, okay? Last year, they checked out over 500,000 items, materials from the library. So we are so fortunate for a city our size to have the library we do, very fortunate.
I would say we're probably more fortunate than some cities larger than our size.
You know what? That's absolutely true. I can think of one in the state that may be better, yeah, yeah.
We don't even need to mention them.
Well, I don't, because they border Missouri, so it doesn't count.
Right, okay, doesn't count. Come on.
And then I'd like for you guys to see the, you know, the community report where it gives the latest, you know, the latest information about, I'll just keep these here and guys can get some written down.
Thank, but don't go far, because I have a signed proclamation for it, and we're going to take your picture.
This weekend.
What, is it Saturday and Sunday?
On Saturday, it's 10 to 3 downstairs in the library. On Sunday, round shoes, give us, you know, those big bags, you can, everything you put in the bag for $5. I mean, you have reading for all.
That's right. Or games, or listening with the audiobooks.
Last year, we had playways, when we kept selling the book sales, we do other things, you know, we supply books to the jail, we supply books for some of the nursing homes, we have playways. Last year, that didn't sell the book sale, we donate, you know, because they're like, you listen and nobody else can bring you here, donating to her considering which time. So, you know, it just keeps giving and giving.
Excellent. Thank you. All right.
Item 3.2, recognition of the month of October 2022 as a National Arts and Humanities Month in the city of Salina. Brittany Willer, Salina Arts and Humanities Commission Chair, will read the proclamation.
This is a perfect day after our study session.
Whereas the nation's 120,000 nonprofit arts organizations, the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for Humanities, the nation's 4,500 local arts agencies and communities across the country, and the Arts and Humanities Councils of the 50 states and the six U.S. jurisdictions and districts have regularly issued official proclamations on an annual basis designated October as National Arts and Humanities Month. And whereas cities and states through their local and state agencies, which represent thousands of cultural organizations, have celebrated the value and importance of culture in the lives of Americans and the health of thriving communities during National Arts and Humanities Month for nearly 30 years. And whereas the arts and humanities embody so much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. And whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of everyone in America. And whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, our country. And whereas arts integration into education improves the academic performance in student retention and sparks creativity and innovation as sought-after skills by business leaders. Whereas despite significant losses due to the coronavirus pandemic, the creative industries remain among the most vital sectors in the American economy, proving new, providing new opportunities for developing cities, creating jobs and economic activity with their own industry and across sectors, and making communities attractive to business development. And whereas the nation's arts and culture sector, nonprofit, commercial, and education is an $877 billion industry that supports 4.6 million jobs, representing 4.2% of the nation's economy, a larger share of the GDP than powerhouse sectors such as agriculture, transportation, and utilities, and boasts $33 billion in internal trade surplus. And whereas the nonprofit arts industry alone generates $27.5 billion in government revenue, $166.3 billion in economic activity annually by organizations and audiences, including spending by attendees to arts events of $31.47 per person, per event, beyond the cost of admission on items such as meals, parking, lodging, and making the arts a vital income source for local businesses. source for local businesses. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Trent Davis, M.D., mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim October as National Arts and Humanities Month in Salina, Kansas. I call upon our citizens to celebrate and be a part of the arts and culture in Salina and in our nation, and I encourage greater participation by said community members to take action and support the arts and humanities.
Thank you. Come on up.
I'm Amanda Morris. I'm the Office Administrator at Arts and Humanities, and I just wanted to share some of the many ways that you can celebrate National Arts and Humanities Month here in Salina. Tonight, at 6:30, Arts Infusion Teaching Artist Drum Safari and Cash Hollister are going to be doing a free, family-friendly performance at Campbell Plaza. You can visit the Smoky Hill Museum and explore their Let's Play exhibit in person, along with Crossroads of the Heartland, the Curiosity Shop, and the Prairie Education Lab, in addition to their online exhibits available through their website. October, through October 15th, the Boom mural festival by The Canvas Project is happening in downtown Salina. Martha Cooper's photography exhibit is on display at the Art Center through the 23rd. On October 12th, Martha Cooper, A Picture Story Film screening at the Salina Art Center Cinema, followed by a talk with Martha and some of the muralists, will happen at 7:00 at the Salina Art Center. October 14th, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., there'll be live music at Campbell Plaza, and on the 15th, from noon to 9:00, there'll be live music also at Campbell Plaza. You can visit the Art Center in addition to Martha Cooper's exhibit, Frank Shaw's exhibit, Reconsider, is on display. You can also take classes at the Art Center warehouse. The garage's current display is Chasing the Checkered Flag and the K.K.O.A. Hall of Fame. October 13th, at 12:15, the Salina Art Center is having a lunch and learn to discuss murals of North Central Kansas. You can experience Hairball at the Tony's Pizza Event Center on the 15th. The 7th Grade Culture Crawl, organized by the Salina Cultural Educators, is happening on October 19th and 21st. And on October 20th, Arts Infusion Teaching Artist Acoustic Idolon will be performing a free public concert at Marymount Properties Chapel. And finally, the Stiefel Theater has two remaining shows this month, Rocktoberfest with the Sunset Centers and Paramount on the 22nd, and on October 28th, Marty Stewart. And you can also consider taking lessons through the Mike Finnegan School of Music.
Well, you can't say there's nothing going on in Salina.
True.
That's for sure. That's impressive. Any sneak previews for 2023?
For the River Festival?
Well, anything folks should start marking their, or whetting an appetite for now.
We, you know, we are working hard on some fun things for the festival, as well as we've got, we just got the new Arts and Humanities website up, which is going to be a great resource, and that's...
I think we got a sneak preview of it during the study session.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, both of you come on forward and give your signed proclamation here. Consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of October 3, 2022.
Here, I move we approve consent agenda.
I'll second that.
They moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. We'll move to 6.1.
Item 6.1, authorize the submission of a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Letter of Intent to the Kansas Division of Emergency Management for a Right-of-Way and Parks Tree Pruning Mitigation Program.
Mr. Toitz, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Jim Toitz. I'm the Director of Public Works, and I stand before you today to request authorization for submission of a grant letter of interest. The letter of interest is for the Kansas Division of Emergency Management, and it is to provide capital funds for a citywide tree pruning mitigation program. In other words, to provide the means for the city to proactively maintain the city's tree canopy. I think many of us can remember the ice storm of 2007. That resulted in about 16,000 tons of tree and limb debris in the city. I remember it well, because I had just arrived to the city and just started my job with the city. December 2021, we had a windstorm that resulted in quite a bit of damage to people's houses, to people's cars, to traffic control devices, and other infrastructure throughout the city. And then, most recently, we had a windstorm with 60 to 80 mile-an-hour winds just in September on the 17th, and that resulted in about another 400 to 415 tons of limb debris. So we've certainly had our share, and there's been other incidents, smaller events, and those kinds of things throughout the years. Those were just some that I thought were important to highlight. In addition to that, we have a new fleet of trash trucks that are 13 feet tall, and we have quite a few, both public and private trucks in the city already, that can frequently make contact with the tree canopy. Semis, we recently had an incident with one of our fire apparatuses hitting a tree and causing some minor damage. The fire chief isn't here, but he assured me that I could say that he is absolutely in support of submitting this letter of interest. Moving trucks, package delivery trucks, all kinds of commercial and public vehicles. Not only can you do damage to the vehicles themselves, but then that can also weaken the tree. And then when we have a severe wind event or an ice storm, like we mentioned, then that tree is more susceptible to having damage occur, and then possibly causing, you know, further problems for, not only the city, but also for residents. Currently, the city responds on a case-by-case basis. This most recent storm, the Parks and Public Works Department worked together to collect residents' debris, but we are looking to do something more than just a response, but have an active program throughout the year to help us maintain the canopy and hopefully reduce the severity and frequency of significant amounts of the tree canopy being damaged. The request itself is for the purchase of a one-ton lift truck, a chipper, and a chipbox, and then a complete arborist package for all four employees of about $15,000. One of the important things of this letter of interest is it asks you to identify any of the FEMA lifelines that this program would support. And a FEMA lifeline are those things that are deemed critical to a community. And if those basic functions or services within a city are maintained, then the city functions well. Whenever one of those lifelines are in jeopardy, through a tornado, a windstorm, a flood, or whatever the case may be, then there's a huge risk and then a lot of difficulty for that community. This particular program addresses five of those community lifelines: safety and security, health and medical, energy, communications, and transportation. And if you think about it, if we maintain a healthy tree canopy, we are less likely to have to focus all of our attention on debris management, and we can focus more on emergency responders being able to access all points in the community, being able to provide ambulance service to medical facilities, to the hospital or elsewhere. Many times, all three of the incidents that I mentioned, there was destruction of the energy grid to some degree in Salina, and you can all remember seeing power lines down. And obviously, that poses a significant risk for a lot of people, and it's something that's expensive and it takes time to repair. One of the things that it addresses is communication, whereas we don't want to have our dispatchers spending all their time focused on debris management or worrying about where all these locations are. There are other things that we think would be more valuable for them to do. They certainly have lots to do, and we want to do our part to help them be able to get to those most critical tasks as soon as possible. And then lastly, transportation, and that really has to do with the people in our community. When there's a disaster, you think, you know, the city thinks about responding to that disaster, but there are people that have to buy groceries, they need to check on their elderly parents or friends or neighbors, they need to get to work, all those kinds of things that are also very critical tasks. And maybe some of those are kind of a stretch, but when you have trees causing down power lines, and you, and we have in this community, we've had trees, I think I shared some pictures where we've had very large trees crushing people's houses or cars, it's a significant impact. In fact, today, while I was preparing for this, I looked up the rankings of the state hazards, and the, there are five that earn a planning significance of high, and those are flood, tornado, windstorm, winter storm, and wildfire. The tree canopy is affected by three of the five: tornadoes, windstorms, and winterstorms. So I can't say whether or not this will result in a grant, it's only a letter of interest. The KDEM will then indicate whether or not this is something they can support. They focus a lot of their attention on hard infrastructure changes, so they are much more likely to fund a community that wants to build a tornado shelter, and they focus less on maintenance. So I can't say with any level of certainty that they would fund this program, but I do believe it's important, it's something that city staff has long sought to provide remedy for. This LOI grant opportunity came along, and we thought it was worthwhile to at least invest some time to see if the state does have interest. If nothing else, it certainly brings it to their attention. Another important aspect of this is that tree and limb debris is a very significant part of the Solid Waste Management Plan for Saline County. You recently approved the 2022 five-year update to the Solid Waste Management Plan, and in that plan, Chapter 6 is dedicated to providing issues, discussion, and recommendations for the next 10-year planning period. Number four in that list of 12 is tree pruning. And in conversation with city staff, the question comes up, well, why? Why would that be important? I guess it's important to recognize that tree and limb debris, along with yard waste, represents 15% of the waste in Saline County. So it's a fairly significant amount of waste. It's certainly, you know, 16,000 tons for one storm. It's a significant amount of waste, given that we collect about 85,000 tons a year in our community. The plan calls for two crew members that would come from vacancies currently existing in the Parks Department, so there would be no increase in personnel costs for the Parks Department. The other two positions, because this is a four-person crew, would, we are recommending to be funded, one from the sanitation work group, which is directly impacted by this program, because, as I mentioned, we have these new trucks that are 13 feet tall, so that makes sense, I think. And then the other one is the street department, who has to respond to, along with the Parks Department, a lot of these tree complaints to start with. And this program would help reduce the amount of manpower necessary by our streets folks, so we thought that that made sense. In the end, if you add all those up, the overall net cost that we are adding to the city budget is actually minus $2,600, because the four positions exist, and one of those positions would go from a 105 to a 104 wage grade, so sanitation ends up saving about $2,600 a year. So in terms of personnel, it's a net savings for additional cost for the city. The overall cost of the equipment that we are requesting, the lift truck, the chipper box, and the arborist tools, is about $220,000. If we were to receive a grant, it would be on a 75-25 split, so we would end up having to fund about $55,000 of that $220,000 overall cost. While it is not a separate fund, since 1996, city staff has set aside $1 per ton from the Solid Waste Fund, and we just keep track of that since 1996 to account for a dollar per ton that is, has been historically used by the city for waste diversion and funding solid waste diversion projects, so the recycling feasibility study, for instance. And then it also pays for the operational expenses of the Solid Waste Management Committee. We would recommend that the city portion, the local share of the grant, should we be awarded, come from that money, and since 1996, with all of the expenses taken out, that fund currently sits at about $1.16 million, or almost $1.2 million. So within the, I mentioned that this was one of the 12 recommendations, so one of the things that we wanted to think about was, well, what other expenses are impacted, or what other expenses would we forecast that needs to be addressed by this fund? So in your blue sheet, it lists those 12 recommendations from the Solid Waste Management Plan, four of which would be directly, we think would be directly impacted, or we would use these funds to pay for those, one being a recycling collection effort within the city-county building, so perhaps buying recycling bins for city offices in this building. It's something that we still have to meet with the county on, discuss with you all, and see, but that would be one. It's any of these 12 that are related directly to diversion, according to the Solid Waste Management Plan. The next one, of course, is tree pruning, which is what this is about. The next one is the Zero Waste Initiative, which, as you know, is now an important part of the Solid Waste Management Plan. We've adopted a goal called Zero Waste by 2050, and if the private sector were to develop ideas, we would present those ideas to the Solid Waste Management Committee, seek their recommendation, and then bring those recommendations to the city commission for approval, but we could also see that $1.2 million being tapped to help the private sector divert solid waste in Saline County as well. And then lastly, enhancing or expanding e-waste recycling, if possible. So those four are the other things that, those four are all competing for this $1.2 million. So I just, we think that's important for you to understand. I mentioned that overall, there is a net savings to the city. It saves money, it uses existing manpower, it provides a joint effort between two departments, it provides long-term care for a very important resource in our city, and that's our tree canopy. It improves Salina's ability to respond more quickly and more efficiently during severe weather incidents. It supports first responders directly and indirectly, and it reduces risk to life and property. And I think for all of those reasons, it makes sense, whether or not we think the KDEM is going to give us this money or not, it's important to try, and that's what we want to do. Regardless of the outcome of the grant application, staff will be meeting on this topic and continuing to work on this, to develop approach necessary to establish a fund, or perhaps we'll come back to you with several funds to isolate this money further. I told you, I mentioned that we have just had a set aside that we do, it's all contained within the Solid Waste Fund. That Solid Waste Fund also has to pay for things like closure, post-closure of the landfill, or landfill gas extraction, and many of the other expenses. or landfill gas extraction and, and many of the other expenses, capital purchase expenses for vehicles and that, that kind of thing. So we may come back to you in the future with the, with the idea of maybe trying to isolate this fund specifically for this purpose. We're still working on that, so we will see. This action has basically four actions identified that you could take, the standard four that, that we've all heard. You could authorize submission of the LOI. You could authorize submission of the LOI with amendment. You could postpone consideration of this. But I will say that I have to apply by the 14th, so it couldn't be postponed for long. And then finally, we don't have to submit. You could reject the idea of submitting for this LOI. And with that, I would stand for any questions that you might have.
Jim, if I could, you might touch on venture grants? That's one use.
Yes, I, I apologize, I skipped over that, trying not to look at my notes too much. Part of that $1 set aside, for about a 10-year period, the city dedicated funds, what we called at that time called venture grants. And they were for both public initiatives, meaning the city itself, and also private sector. We purchased items, we helped purchase items for image recycling, as an example, when it was, when it was around. But the, that $1 set aside for that 10-year period was used for those kinds of events, for that, or for those kinds of initiatives. Purchasing, purchasing equipment or conducting even educational programs within schools or organizations. Yeah, so that, that is, that is part of one of the uses that we, that we use that set aside money for.
Mr. Longline, any questions?
Any questions? Sorry.
My question with the grant, with the equipment and the people, would we be able to utilize this in other areas, like the parks or just general?
Yes, so, so absolutely. So our intent is, we met early on, we initially, when we first started looking this as a solid waste issue, that, that came up in the previous five-year review of the solid waste management plan. We started meeting with the Parks Department on a fairly regular basis. And it, it got to the point where we, we thought initially that we, what we might try to do is issue a contract to do this work. And that contract is extremely expensive, and we, we wanted to look for another way to go about doing this. And I've managed to talk myself out of knowing what your question was.
Working in the parks?
Oh, working with the parks. So we're going to provide two people, the Parks Department's going to provide two people, and we see these four people working three days a week, or 60% of the time, on right-of-way tree issues, and then 40%, or two days a week, on parks-related issues within our park system. So it, it benefits both of us by working together. We think that we're going to be able to address issues that haven't previously been, or have not regularly been addressed in our park system, and it will finally provide a solution to maintain our canopy, which we've never had before. So we think in, in both cases, it works together for, for both of our benefits. In, in the case of a flood, or snow fighting, or some other event where these people may be best utilized within the original departments, those two employees would return to us for plowing streets, and the other two employees would stay with parks, and they would focus on all of the winter snow fighting that, that they're responsible for, which is extensive throughout our community, so.
So I guess the justice of my question is that the equipment and the people could do other duties besides the hazard mitigation?
Yes, absolutely. We do think, I, I didn't mention this, but we divided the city into five sections, and we did survey that city, the city streets. We stopped when we reached 3,300 locations needing trimmed. We provided those locations to the Parks Department, who, for obvious reasons, were overwhelmed. So then, as departments, we got together and said, how could we best tackle this? So we tried, we tried to devise ways that we would cut up the work. So if a citizen were to call today, one of the questions that one of our administrative assistants might ask is, is the limb attached to the tree, or is it in the road? Because that will depend, that will help us determine which one of us are going to respond to that problem. We try to take care of, Public Works tries to take care of those tree issues in our alley system. Most of the right-of-way tree work now is on a case-by-case basis. If it's attached to the tree, then Parks and forestry personnel are responsible for it, and if it's detached, then it becomes Public Works' responsibility to move it out of the street.
And I, I think the argument could be made that working in the parks is hazard mitigation as well, whether it's immediate, imminent, or if it's someone, you know, later in the parks.
After reading through this in the packet, I'm just more aware, going down Belmont Boulevard around Wesley, there's a Bradford pear tree that they have cut an L to make way in the roadway. And I, I question you, is that the property owner's responsibility, or the city's?
I, I will let Brett respond if he so chooses, but I would say that by code, it would be the property owner's responsibility. The city does not believe it's in our best interest to have citizens operating in the street to trim trees. So there's a delicate line there that we have to balance all the time.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a, a good way to answer that or not, but.
No, that's pretty accurate.
That's about as truthful as I can be.
So if this, if this grant is approved, we would, the city would be able to address those issues?
I, I, yes, and so as I was saying, we divided the city into five sectors. The northwest Salina being number one priority, southwest Salina being priority number two, north Salina in general being priority number three, and then east and south being four and five. That is just by virtue of the number of trees, the number of low-hanging limbs that we see, the number of distressed trees, or problems with tree roots and those kinds of things. We, the city code requires that all trees in the, in the right-of-way be trimmed to 13 feet above the street. We are suggesting by this program, we want to use the, and correct me if I'm wrong, the International Society of Boriculture, I believe is how you say it, standards, and it's called the natural pruning method. So we're going to try to avoid those sharp Ls and the, the really noticeable, where you just take a chunk out of a tree, for instance. But we want to trim the trees to 15 feet. That allows that crew several feet of growth before they have to return to that area. So we see this basically happening on a rotating basis. Obviously, they're going to still respond to any emergency trees that have to be addressed, or complaints that come in, whether that's Chief Snyder telling us about a tree that one of his apparatuses hit, or whether it comes from a UPS driver who says, hey, can you please go check this out? But we'll respond to those, and then we'll return to the normal priority zone that, that we had selected for that year. If things go well and we're able to improve that work, I assure you that both departments have more than enough work to keep that crew very busy otherwise. So if they're, if they weren't doing this and they weren't maintaining their equipment, they're going to be performing some other task for the city.
Mr. Langland?
I am kind of curious as far as, is there a species of tree that seems to be a little bit more prone to the problems that we're talking about in terms of wind damage and guessing drought, probably?
I definitely know when I am not able to speak on a subject, and that is it. So would you please come rescue me?
Sorry.
Because this, this is out of my, this is out of my area of professional expertise.
I think I can answer that, the elm tree.
Brett Lamer, used to be the city forester, now I'm the deputy director. But no, there's not one that causes each, though, it just depends on what the issue is. If it's low limbs, it's typically usually like a Siberian elm or something like that. Hackberry have a tendency to look really good, and then all of a sudden, really bad in a windstorm, because they don't show, their, their wood's so dense, they don't show any sort of stress or anything, and then all of a sudden, when it splits out, you can see that the center was completely decayed. So there's no one right answer for that, but there, each tree has their tendencies that you have to learn and, and know. But if it's low limbs, I'm, it's almost, not almost always, it's very frequently Siberian elm or a maple of something that grows fairly, fairly quickly, and we just, we cut it, you know, like he stated before, we'd cut it right at the coat or just above, and then before you have chance, it'd already be, you know, growing down into, into undercoat again. So that's why we want to go up a little higher for something like that, because then it buys you a little bit of time. But a Siberian elm can grow so quickly that it, it can be an issue six months later if you don't do it right. So, does that answer most of the questions?
Sorry about that.
Just so it cleared, the only increase in budget for the following year would be upkeep on that equipment.
Sure, so obviously, parks will experience some maintenance costs. They have to maintain a piece of equipment. They're going to have saws that have to be sharpened and blades replaced and fuel purchased for the saws and, you know, the, the normal things that, that are required for maintaining the equipment. So yes, absolutely.
And the two unfilled positions are currently budgeted, so we don't have a increase in budget for those two positions. So, I mean, this year to next year?
Correct.
Relatively, relatively budget-neutral, other than the maintenance.
Correct, yes. So the, the, like, for example, the two positions within Public Works, both of those are just, they just both happen to be vacancies right now, but they are positions that we have budgeted for and that we would otherwise intend to fill.
And if the grant was not received, is this important enough that we would want to go on this alone anyway?
Well, thank you for asking that question, because that was probably my closing comment anyway, that whether or not the, the, the LOI gets any traction with KDEM, whether or not we are able to apply and then hopefully get that grant, we do feel that it is important enough that we ought to consider. We think that we've found a way to do it as inexpensively as we can. There are certainly other pieces of equipment that we lurked, looked at that were more expensive. In, in months and months of work, Brett and I in particular have focused on what is the best, most efficient way that we could deal with the tree canopy that satisfies both departments, and we feel pretty confidently that if we did this, then it would have a major impact on decreasing the amount of effort that is spent in a severe weather situation. We spend a great deal of our time in the emergency, in the basement at the emergency management room whenever one of these kinds of incidents happen. And it's frustrating to me to see the number of times that dispatchers are, we're, the business of dealing with a storm is so focused on debris, and I think if we have a method of proactively maintaining it, and we can manage a more healthy canopy, then I would hope that that would decrease the amount of reliance that we have to spend on what happens after the fact.
I think you've done such a good job on justifying the need to apply for the grant that you've justified, the fact that we, we can't not do this.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any questions, comments from the public?
Dalton McDowell, Salina. I've been saying this for a long time, something needs to happen, and I would, you guys would be crazy to not authorize them to at least try. It's all you can do, is try. But yeah, something needs to happen, so.
Thank you.
I am a flatland tree hugger, so obviously.
Give me that again.
Pardon me.
Give me that phrase again.
A flatland tree hugger.
Okay.
But I concur, Mayor, I think that, I, I knew this was coming up, as Mr. Toich had mentioned it, and so I read through the entire packet. I thought it was extremely well-written. I think justifications were made, as you noted, that regardless of the award of a grant, this is something that we should do and probably should have done a long time ago. They say the best try, best time to plant a tree is 10 years ago. Well, we should have been cutting some of them down 10 years ago. Our tree canopy in the corner neighborhoods and in north Salina are in really bad shape, as well as a lot of the parks. I used to park cars for the River Festival and would call and note all the trees that had dead hangers and widowmakers, and I'm afraid that if we had a large limb fall on a visitor, that would not look very good. And I just want to make ju, a, a good justification, two of them, for doing this, whether or not we get the grant or not. The first being is that every now and then we'll get a grant request for safe routes to school, for our schoolchildren. And if you take a look at those routes, I think that we could start by prioritizing those safe routes to school and make sure that they truly are safe, not just from vehicular traffic and otherwise, but also from the possibility that they could be injured or killed by falling limbs. Also, one thing that Mr. Toich mentioned, and, and I think that is, as good as the written presentation was, that his presentation up here was really good. I missed the part about the state looking at funding of things like storm shelters and so on as a priority of, of those sort of capital improvements. And I think if we're going to look at more of approving affordable housing as houses without basements, that we may, if these grants come up again, we may, if we have all, all of these things taken care of, and the state is confident that we're, confident that we're taking care of the maintenance part of things, we might have even, even a better chance of receiving funding for things like FEMA shelters and storm shelters, that if we are going to do affordable housing without basements, things like that, I believe are going to be critical. And the last thing I would just say, operationally, I mean, it does kind of sound weird when you say, well, three days I'll be working on this, and then the other two days I'll jump over on this. I hope that we're talking about 60-40, and I hope that whatever the priorities and, and operational things start getting into shape, that Mr. Gardner will, as an efficiency expert, will be able to play a part in that. Thank you.
Norman Vannell, Salina. My question is, do you have height and width permits for these big trucks coming into town? Because there is a minimum height, and if we as truckers meet them, we are in compliance. So you need height and width permits. Out of state people come here, haul in the state, into the city, they laugh at the permits, the regulations you got. You don't have any. You'd be selling permits, you'd be generating some money. My next concern is, how big a tree are you going, are you just going to be trimming, trimming the canopy, or are you going to be taking the whole big tree down? Because there are some big trees out there. That kind of industry is the most dangerous occupation there is in the United States. That is the most dangerous occupation in the United States. So you've earned to have a lot of equipment. So I would, that's what I'm worried about, is the width, or the width and height permits, and what size of trees will these guys be permitted to take down? I've got a 58-inch bar on my chainsaw.
Well, I'm going to hope that they're smart enough not to come ask us if a tree should come down.
The cost of this program for a Ben Winhold, Salina. The cost of, um, this program for equipment that they're talking about is, is 220,000. Uh, I would like to know if, if staff, and I, I, I understand the safety equipment needed for the personnel and your chainsaws and, and, um, chains and, and fuel and everything. But when it comes to a bucket truck and a chipper, um, doesn't the city already have one or more bucket trucks? And I know they had a chipper at one time because that was used for the recycling of Christmas trees, uh, to be able to put, uh, that product on, um, some of our, um, walk areas down a, at Lakewood, some of the paths down there. So have you looked at, uh, do we already have some of this equipment, uh, on, in, in the arsenal? Or was it another problem where they're too old, the city didn't do any maintenance on them?
Please, yeah.
Um, Mr. Mayor, first, if I could say, I just appreciate the comments. Um, I had not thought about the safe routes to school. We have recently, as part of Public Works, developed a sidewalk gap matrix. And in that, it's, so it's to identify any location in the city that has gaps in its sidewalks. And one of the criteria, it's actually the first criteria in order of priority, is safe routes to school. So I appreciate that comment. And I'll certainly, um, have a talk with Brett about trying to incorporate that idea into each of the priority zones that we do. I think it's a, it makes sense and it, it could be beneficial to us. Um, I also agree with the 60-40. That is not a hard, fast rule. If there, we, we have, uh, Mr. Lamer and I have had extensive talks about this, that if there is a urgent need to remove trees in the right-of-way, he is not going to be pressed to say, well, Jim, we're going to go into the parks for two days this week. If, if there's an emergency or something that, that is safety oriented, whether it's in the right-of-way or whether it's in a city park, we're going to make that the priority. And we will balance that 60-40 as best we can. But certainly, it's, we're not going to hold to this hard, fast rule that, um, we can't work outside of, um, that. We have a fantastic working relationship. Um, in any project that we do, I often am in consult with Mr. Lamer. Moving the stage, we took down three trees and we have a requirement to, every tree that we remove, we replace. And, um, so I talked to him about that, looking at, uh, it is very common when we have, um, curb and gutter complaints or things like that, oftentimes it's a tree root that, uh, has pulled a sidewalk up or damaged the curb or whatever. So it is very common for streets and parks to work closely together to address those kinds of issues. And, uh, we would certainly do that with the 60-40 issue. Um, in terms of, I, I don't want to miss anything. I wrote down equipment and site safety. Um, I, I will leave this to the expert, and that is Mr. Lamer. These four people will report directly to him. He is a certified master arborist, and I trust him to know how to properly respond and how to, how to deal with these trees. Um, when we first approached this idea, I was not the one who suggested that we use this lift truck. It was actually he who made that suggestion, um, because I was thinking in, in a different way and it's not my area of expertise. I just wanted to make sure he understood that if it's something else that we need, that's what we ought to pursue. Um, but yes, we're going to focus on equipment and, and site safety. And partially, that's the reason why we believe that this requires four people. Um, because they are working in the streets, they are going to be removing trees that are quite large. Um, we're going to have to isolate that zone within the streets. There's precautions that have to be made. We're going to be chipping right there within the site. So there's a lot of site safety issues that I'm sure, um, Brett will focus on, uh, to a great degree. And then lastly, do we have lift trucks in the, in the city, um, fleet right now? We have two lift trucks. In fact, they're the identical trucks to what we are buying. However, both of those trucks are used by traffic control on a daily basis. Those are, those trucks in particular are trucks that you will not see, um, generally, uh, parked and not being used. They are certainly not on the city's low mileage list, I can assure you. Um, if we go to deploy to fix or, uh, perform maintenance on any of our traffic signals, those are the trucks that we use. They're used regularly. I do believe that, um, Parks does have, um, one truck in the Parks and Forestry. I don't want to speak to it because I don't know much about it. I know that they bought that truck used. It is several years old. I am sure that, um, we don't, we try never to grow the fleet. It's something that I, um, sometimes have to be unpopular with others on to, uh, remind them that we don't want to grow the fleet. Um, but we'll certainly look at that truck. And I don't know what Mr. Lamer's intent would be with that truck. But the two lift trucks that we do have, we use on a regular basis.
And is the chipper that you use rented from a company? Or is that, I guess, get Mr. Lamer to speak.
Brett Lamer again. Uh, no, we, we, this is going to be replacing what we have. Um, the vehicle or the, the chipper, uh, the, the bucket truck or man lift, if you want. Um, all that stuff has basically been here, uh, well before myself. I've been here for like nine years. Um, all the, the man lift is a 2001. So they're just getting up there where we thought that we could make better decisions. Uh, the man lift that we have right now is just basically, uh, a split boom, basically has two booms, one lower, one, one, uh, higher. And where, why that gets difficult working, uh, on like tree canopy in a right-of-way area, is you may not be able to, to extend that boom all the way. And then in order to get only about 13 or 14 foot, you actually have to get under, right directly underneath what you're trying to do, raise up to it, make the cut, get back down, move the truck just a little bit, just to go back up. You, you don't have a lot of lateral movement with a boom that, that goes up, uh, 55 feet. So with the smaller, uh, vehicles, we figured we, you know, we could, we'd make the choice that we can park and then not have to move a bunch to make the same cuts. Just way, way more efficient in that si, situation. And then, like I said, the chip truck, the, the chipper, all getting on the, getting up in age. And if we start, uh, really attacking all these trees, the 3,000 locations plus, uh, we figured the wear and tear is going to be quicker than what we would, uh, be able to, to, you know, plan ahead for. We'd like to start with new and, and work it that way. So all of the vehicles, all the, all the stuff, uh, is going to be a one-for-one replacement. And then, uh, and we, we do already have equipment, um, like maintenance budgeted. So it shouldn't even be, uh, too much out of that. It just may be a little bit higher than what it's been in the past. But we can, you know, it shouldn't be a major, major crush on that, so.
Thank you. And I would just make a comment about the 60-40. I'm assuming, in my mind, that's, you know, over a 12-month period, it's 60-40. It would be seasonal variations to respond to crises, but generally speaking, it's 60-40.
And one of the things we discussed is just that it's, we want to be the most efficient we even can possibly be. If you're working on the street for three days and then you just come to an abrupt stop and you go into the parks and you leave things, it, that, that's not good for anybody. So it'll be done as a most efficient way possible, but try to get everybody equal, equal, uh, the 60-40.
All right. Thank you. All right. Bring it back to, is anyone on line, thank you. Bring it back to the commission, either further questions or action?
I guess I, uh, the liability of it, it's kind of in the back of my mind, is just going to require additional liability insurance for.
Uh, our liability insurance is very, very broad.
Plenty.
And I'm sure it'll cover this.
Just, uh, this is, this is something we already have done, uh, speaking to the, the large trees. Um, we already do that as it is. What we typically do, if it's larger than what we can handle, we contract it anyways. Then that way, you get somebody that, that even, you know, uh, maybe better than, than myself, uh, although I am a certified arborist. Uh, sometimes it's better to have somebody else with bigger pieces of equipment, cranes and that sort of stuff. So it's something we already do. We'll just be able to do it better.
I guess my other thought was, uh, coordinating these efforts with Evergy, or trimming. That's what they do year-round, correct. Yeah. Okay. Sounds like a good idea.
All right. Entertainer motion.
Mayor Davis, I move that we authorize the submission of a hazard mitigation grant program letter of interest by the City of Salina to the Kansas Division of Emergency Management for a citywide right-of-way and parks tree pruning program.
Second.
Well, there's no way to shorten that. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the submission of a hazard mitigation grant program letter of intent to the Kansas Division of Emergency Management for a right-of-way and parks tree pruning mitigation program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you. Six point two.
Item six point two, approve ordinance number 22-11132 on second reading, amending chapter 38, article one of the City of Salina Code by adopting the 2022 Standard Traffic Ordinance for Kansas Cities published by the League of Kansas Municipalities.
All right. Ordinance 22-11132 was passed on first reading on October 3rd. We've had no comments received and just look to city manager, we've made no changes in here.
Correct.
All right. Any questions, comments from the commissioners? Any public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, our move, we approve ordinance number 22-11132 on second reading.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 22-11132 on second reading. Have vote by roll call.
Uh, Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. That motion carries three to zero. Thank you. Six point three.
Item six point three, approve ordinance number 22-11133 on second reading, amending chapter 25, article one of the City of Salina Code by adopting the 2022 Uniform Public Defense Code for Kansas Cities published by the League of Kansas Municipalities.
All right. Like the prior ordinance, this was approved on first reading, October 3rd. We've had no comments and no changes.
Correct.
All right. Any further questions or comments from the commissioners? Any public comment? Okay, bring it back to the commissioners for action.
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve ordinance number 22-11133 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 22-11133 on second reading. Again, have a vote by roll call.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. That carries three to zero. Thank you. Uh, item seven point one.
Item seven point one, approve ordinance number 22-11135 on first reading, clarifying an amendment to the text of section 42-508D governing the placement of temporary signs during election season.
Mr. Andrea.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an item that deals with the section 42-508D, which is a part of the city's temporary sign regulations. And there were two kind of significant events that occurred in 2015 that prompted, um, communities across the nation in Kansas to have to reexamine their temporary sign regulations. Um, one was a passage of a law by, uh, the state legislature, which preempts local laws relating to the regulation of political signs during the 45-day run-up to an election. And just about that same time, the United States Supreme Court rendered a decision known as Reed versus Town of Gilbert, and essentially said that cities may not impose differing regulations based on the content of what signs say. And that, that particular decision focused on temporary signs, where the Town of Gilbert had a variety of rules and timeframes and sizes and things based on what a temporary sign said. And so, um, because of the Reed decision, there was a lot of discussion within the state of Kansas about whether the legislation passed by the legislature was constitutional. And the question mostly focused on the use of the term political sign in the statute, whereas the City of Salina and most other cities in Kansas had deleted the term political sign from their sign codes because that was considered to be content-based. Um, but in 2018, in November, the Kansas Attorney General issued an opinion which concluded that the statute passed in 2015 did not violate the Reed decision or the First Amendment. And as a result of that, the City of Salina went back and looked at our sign code, um, again. So prior to that Attorney General's opinion, we had a temporary sign code that had a numerical limit on the number of signs that you could have, and just had a flat prohibition on the placement of temporary signs in the right-of-way. As a result of, um, the Attorney General's opinion, the City of Salina went back and amended our code to allow an unlimited number of temporary signs during the 45-day period leading up to an election. Um, there was one other follow-up action that the, the city commission engaged in, and that was looking at the period that falls between a primary election and a general election. That was looked at, again, by the planning commission, where they recommended that the city take a no-gap approach, meaning that instead of having no signs in the right-of-way in that period, there, there would be a period between the primary and 45 days ahead of the general, that essentially, signs in the right-of-way can remain there and remain in place between the August primary date and the November general election date. When we were presenting our information and examples, we clarified that the state legislation and the text amendment was designed to give either an abutting property owner or through their permission, a tenant or candidate to place a sign in the right-of-way abutting their property. And since this was authorizing property owners to place the signs, we explained that that would not allow signs to be placed in the medians of public streets because there's no abutting owner to give permission for that. But we have, um, learned in the subsequent campaigns that, um, there is a need to make that part of the code and to make it more clear. So we took that discussion to the planning commission. They authorized staff to initiate a clarifying text amendment that would more clearly prohibit the placement of signs in locations where there's medians separating lanes of traffic on public streets or other types of grassy islands. And so, as we noted, the intent of the legislature was to give abutting owners the right to express their political opinions by placing signs in the right-of-way next to their property. And so our code has been consistent with that. So our text amendment that you are considering tonight has three new subsections that try to clarify that situation. The subsection I that's in the text is intended to address situations such as the situation on South Ohio Street, south of Cloud Street, where you have Ohio Street and then a grassy island and then a public frontage road. You also have situation on Ninth Street where you have Ninth Street Place, then a grassy island, and then the Ninth Street right-of-way. And a similar situation on Broadway, where you've got Windsor Drive running parallel to Broadway Boulevard on the east. And so that is what subsection I is intended to address. So a property owner who lives on Windsor Drive could put a sign out in the right-of-way, um, in front of their property on Windsor Drive, but they couldn't put a sign out in the grassy median between Windsor Drive and Broadway Boulevard. The second subsection II is intended to prohibit the placement of temporary signs in the medians of divided streets. So for example, Belmont Boulevard or South Ninth Street or North Ninth Street leading out to I-70, those would be examples of streets that have driving lanes on both sides of a grassy island. And then the third item is just to reinforce locally what is already prohibited, which is the placement of signs, um, within an interstate interchange right-of-way. And so those, those are the three areas, um, that we were trying to make more clearly explicit in the code as opposed to using interpretation based on what we had told the city commission previously. So, at the October 4th meeting, the planning commission held a So at the October fourth meeting, the planning commission held a public hearing on that. They had an hour-plus discussion, most of which discussed what the term "other public use" was intended to mean. And there was a lot of discussion about whether a hike-bike path or a sidewalk, something that fell between. If you look at the example of the homes that back up to Schilling Road, on the north side of Schilling Road, you have a grassy area, then you have a hike-bike path, then you have another grassy area. There were questions about whether "other public use" was intended to keep signs from being placed on the other side of that hike-bike path. And so not really being able to resolve that, the planning commission recommended that the text amendment be approved as drafted and presented with the term or the language "other public use" being deleted altogether. And their concern was that that term was not precise enough. And so they addressed it. They discussed other alternatives, but they just thought if that term was deleted, that would eliminate any questions about that. Following the planning commission meeting, the city attorney prepared some qualifying language that clarifies that the term "public use" does not include hike-bike paths or sidewalks. And that is presented as a separate attachment for your discussion or consideration. That was done in recognition of the fact that the planning commission struggled to determine what was meant by that. There are some things like utility boxes, traffic signal boxes, sanitary sewer lift stations. There are things that are in the right-of-way that could be considered intervening public uses that you wouldn't want to put signs around or on the other side of. But the attempt was made by the city attorney to clarify that that did not include hike-bike paths or sidewalks. And so for the purposes of this text amendment, it doesn't matter where the sidewalk is or where the hike-bike path is. Essentially, the abutting property owner can put a sign between their property line and the curb line irrespective of whether there's a sidewalk or five-foot or three-foot or four-foot or hike-bike path between them. And so the alternative language that was put forth by the city attorney is intended to clarify that more so than by just deleting the term "other public use." So this comes to you with a recommendation for approval of the text amendment by the planning commission. Your options this evening would be to concur with their recommendation and approve attached ordinance twenty-two eleven one-eleven thirty-five on first reading. That attached ordinance simply deleted the term "other public use" from the text. You could approve the ordinance with minor revisions, additions, or deletions to the text. And we think these can be made if the revisions are consistent with what the planning commission discussed and recommended. In reviewing that and reviewing the discussion, we believe that the alternate language that was put forward by the city attorney is consistent with the same concerns expressed by the planning commission. So that version could be adopted with three votes at today's meeting. If you think that major revisions need to be made, those would require four votes to pass at this meeting and that those votes would not be available. So you would have the option of either returning it back to the planning commission or postponing consideration to a future meeting date. Or you could overturn the recommendation of the planning commission and vote to deny to make any changes at all if you think those changes are not in the public interest. So we did spend about a little over an hour looking at aerial photos, looking at different case scenarios. But the three areas that we tried to differentiate there are the situation where you have a grassy island that has streets on both sides, where you have a street with travel lanes that has a grassy island in the middle. And thirdly, interstate interchanges, where we do have some situations where people have property abutting the interstate and you cannot place any election signs in the K-dot right-of-way and those interchanges are K-dot right-of-way. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about prior actions or the planning commission's recommendation or the choices you have this evening.
Commissioner Longby?
Yeah, I guess the issue I have with this is it's just targeted at political signs. But there's all kinds of signs out there, garage sale signs, event signs. That's not part of this language at all. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. Because during election season, we do not and cannot enforce on signs based on their content. So if during the election season, the legislature has, even though they have used the term "political signs," we can't use the term "political signs." And so during that election, forty-five day election season, if somebody puts out some other type of sign in a legally permissible place in the right-of-way, that is allowed because we can't read the sign in order to enforce the code.
In order to comply with the limited scope of the statute, we've had to broaden the scope to include all signs regardless of content, within the exception that the legislature provided for political signs. So it is encompassing more signs than political signs within the exception.
So I guess my next question is who's going to enforce this?
Well, primarily historically, it's been the city's code enforcement division that has enforced signs in the right-of-way.
And we found ourselves actively enforcing it in the last election cycle.
We know.
But just to say that the staff did enforce it.
There was some discussion with the planning commission about whether the fact that the city mowed the right-of-way versus the private property owner was a relevant factor, and it's not. The idea is to err on the side of free expression of speech. And so whether it's inconvenient for the city crews that are mowing that, if it's a permissible right-of-way location, then city crews just have to work around it at that period of time. But there was no consideration done in terms of whether these areas are mowed or maintained by the city or by private owners. The idea was that our sign code and most sign codes in Kansas prohibit the placement of any sign in the public right-of-way, and it is generally prohibited. The one period of time when that, there's an exception to that, is the forty-five days leading up to an election. And during that time, there's no enforcement of temporary signs in the right-of-way. Doesn't matter if they're garage sale signs or aluminum siding signs or what they might be during that forty-five days. The city, if it's a permissible location, will not enforce the prohibition on right-of-way signs.
So these areas you identified in the mapping, it's all public-owned property?
It's all public right-of-way.
Public right-of-way, yeah.
Yes.
So there's no private property that divides the streets?
No, not in the specific examples that I gave. And we think that's part, that is part of the enforcement toolkit that we have discussed is that we've given these descriptions in writing and reports and at meetings. But we think that getting these areas mapped and basically having a set of maps that say these are permissible areas, these are impermissible areas, and having those in the hands of people doing the enforcement will increase the consistency. It's been, it's, part of it has been the inconsistency in not always people being on the same page in terms of the enforcement. We think this helps clarify.
All right. Any questions from the public? Or comments? Any online? Mr. Wood? Nope. All right. Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Davis, I move for the approval of ordinance number two-two dash one-one-one-three-five on the first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash one-one-one-three-five.
Just for clarification, that motion is to approve the planning commission version, which deletes the reference to other public uses and not the alternate language that the city attorney had put forward, which had the, which just clarified that other pub, it left the other public uses in but did not clarify that other public uses did not include sidewalks or hike-bike paths. Maybe I should let Mr. Bangston elaborate on that.
Second.
Second.
All right. We've already skipped that part. I'm sorry.
Just want, if I could, clarify with the city attorney procedurally how we need to verify. Sounds like you made a motion to include the amendment?
Yes.
So Greg, do you have?
Do you want the amendment approved first?
Well, yeah, if you've made a motion in the second, the cleanest way would be to vote on the motion and then vote on the ordinance as amended?
I was including it all as being previously amended, but maybe that wasn't the correct assumption.
I want to make sure that, if I may, that I'm responding consistently with Mr. Skreg's thought.
Let me make sure I, I believe after Mr. Andrews' request for clarification, there was a motion in the second made at the dais just a little bit ago.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure we're proceeding on that motion correctly.
The, in that it hasn't been acted upon, I would think it could be, the motion could be modified if approved by the second as well unless you were thinking that we wanted to act on the amendment separately.
Okay, well, I'll do it in two steps.
At the moment, I think we have two motions on the table. I'm just trying to figure out how to deal with them.
So a motion on the floor, and that would be to accept the amendment?
That's certainly, certainly one way and under the circumstances, probably the best way to address it. So the motion that I underst, and maybe it would be appropriate to ask for the second motion to be restated, and that would be to amend the proposed ordinance. Am I, I'm looking to Mr. Skreg to be sure that what I'm saying is consistent with his thought.
And I'm trying to make sure I understand the action that the commissioner.
Right, and that's, we'll do that first. Could you offer a way to state the amendment, please?
Certainly. The, the proposed amendment would be to amend the ordinance as recommended with language to be included in Section forty-two dash five-zero-eight, sub-paragraph D-two. And the language would be to insert that when references made to the area referred to as, quote, "the unpaved public right-of-way," immediately "abutting private property," the following language would be inserted, and that would be, "shall include any unpaved public right-of-way physically separated from such private property by an intervening pedestrian sidewalk or hike-back, hike-bike path." But, and it continues to read, "shall not include, Sub-1, any unpaved public right-of-way physically separated from such private property by an intervening public street, alleyway, drive, or other public use," and then inserting parenthetically, "other than a pedestrian sidewalk or hike-bike path."
All right. And that is for your motion-making ease printed on the white sheet in the back. If you go halfway down through that paragraph.
Would so move be sufficient at this point?
It would, yes.
We would appreciate that.
It certainly would, yes.
That latitude.
That was my intent, was to try to get it to that point.
So moved and?
Second.
Seconded, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to approve an amendment to ordinance twenty-two dash one-one-one-three-five as just read in detail. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries three to nothing. Now, is there action to be taken on the?
What I neglected to, we got to that part first. What I neglected to address is that because of the upcoming general election, our recommendation would be?
We still haven't approved the motion yet.
Okay. That was the amendment.
But don't leave, because it shouldn't take long if it passes. All right. Now, is there a motion to approve, I mean, the amended ordinance? Which is where we were.
Actually, I think you had that motion, you amended the original motion, so now you're back to the amended motion.
So now we're back to, that's right, that motion's already on the floor. Thank you. All right. So we just need to vote. All in favor of approving the amended ordinance twenty-two dash one-one-one-three-five, say aye?
Aye.
That motion carries three to zero. Ms. Andrew, please. Thank you.
Now that you have approved ordinance twenty-two eleven thirty, one-one-one-three-five as amended on first reading, because of the penancy of the upcoming election, we think consideration should be given to doing first and second reading on the same day. And to do that, a motion should be made to find that a compelling public interest exists to allow first and second reading on the same day and to have a vote on that. And if that is the course of action, then the final action would be to approve the ordinance as amended on second reading and to have that vote by roll call.
Thank you. Is there a motion to find that a compelling public interest exists to allow first and second reading of the on the same day?
Mayor, I make a motion we should approve ordinance number two-two.
We have to vote that, well, we have to vote that there's a compelling interest first. Is it broken in two steps?
Okay.
So express our intent first.
I make a motion we have a compelling public interest to approve this reading on second, second reading. Ordinance two-two dash one-one-one-three-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, and with the motion-maker's agreement, the compelling interest is that voting occurs very soon and to eliminate any confusion, it would be best to handle this today so everyone's expectations will be equal across the board. Any comments, questions on this? Any public?
Hold on.
There is, there is someone on?
Yep.
Hope there is a hand up. Thank you. Mr. Farber?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Looking sharp today, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that outfit that you have on.
Thank you.
I would go out on a limb here and say that the changes that were made to the ordinance that was brought before you, recommended by the planning commission, have significant changes. And I would even go so far as to say that it needs a supermajority by the commission in order to be moving forward. Not only was the language that was removed by the planning commission put back in by the amendment, but also additional language was incorporated into it. And I would check with the attorney, obviously, for his expertise, but just to see if we are in fact, or you are in fact, able to even move forward with this, with the language as much as was changed in this ordinance.
Thank you for the question, and I'll defer to the city attorney.
The question is not necessarily the extent of the change in terms of volume, if you will. The word? The question is not necessarily the extent of the change, uh, in terms of volume, if you will, the wording. The matter of consistency is whether or not it is in fact consistent with, uh, what was intended by the planning commission in making their recommendation. Now, I personally was not present at the planning commission meeting, so I can't say that I am speaking from firsthand recollection. As the discussion was related to me, I understood the changes to be consistent with the thoughts and the questions, and it, and it was certainly a good question raised by the planning commission, and the language was certainly prepared with the intent of, uh, addressing what I understood was the intent of the planning commission, and thus, I certainly evaluated the question that, uh, planning commissioner Farber raises, uh, thinking that we were acting or suggesting a means by which, uh, you would be acting consistently. The, uh, planning commissioner Farber was obviously present during that discussion, and I would think it would be helpful possibly to hear how it is that Mr. Farber believes this is inconsistent with the discussion in which he participated. If that's the wish of the, of the mayor.
I was gonna ask a, a version of that same question. Did you under, hear the attorney's question, Mr. Farber?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and, and Mr. Bankston, thank you.
Yeah, and the intent was certainly not to suggest that you would act contrary to the direction and recommendation of the commission, other than trying to clarify what we understood, uh, to be the issue that they were concerned with, so.
Yep. Mr. Farber?
Correct, and, and I believe that the, the rewrite and the amendment that Mr. Bankston has, has put forward is, I would say, consistent with what our discussion entailed, uh, with the planning commission. However, we were trying to narrow it down, and as this was brought forward to staff, we were trying to provide clarity and make this a more simple function for everybody involved, and with no offense to the city attorney, and to those who, who have higher intelligence than I, it took me four times to read through the addition to the amendment to verify that he was actually in agreeance or in concurrence with what the planning commission had talked about. And so I, I think it, it conflagrates it even more, and, and I think there is more confusion with the addition of the amendment that is proposed than just removing that one little phrase there. And, and I think that's where the planning commission was going, we were just trying to make it simple for everybody to understand exactly what the procedure was during this election season.
So does this differ significantly from what the planning commission's final action was after an objection was raised?
I do not believe that it differs significantly, and, and I appreciate the, uh, explanation that, that the city attorney provided on that, I do not believe it differs significantly, I, I do however believe there can still be confusion in what was written as the addition.
More confusion with that, or more confusion with the vagary, the way it was originally?
And therein lies the rub, you know, there is the question, and that's what we're trying to eliminate, is, is so there is no confusion. And, um, I, I don't know that there's a perfect answer, that's why we, as a planning commission, eventually, after, you know, several, several minutes of discussion, we decided just to u, remove that phrasing just to open up, you know, that particular piece of property from, um, your house to the curb line. That way, there's no, um, no question about what is right-of-way, what is a public use, et cetera, et cetera, down the line.
And I, I'm assuming this will affect relatively few pieces of property in the city, and persons in that category may literally have to read this four times right along with you. And believe me, you're not the only one in this room who read, read it at least four times. To say, I, I think for the majority of people, it's not going to affect their ability to place a sign, and I could be wrong, but I'm assuming that the, the mapping is gonna have relatively few areas that this impact.
Yeah, I think the, the mapping won't, I don't know that the average citizen will be able to go to the mapping and see their property, it'll be the areas that fall into the exception or the prohibited area that'll be identified on a map. Everything else will be presumed to be available for political signs. You know, I, I think I'm restating Mr. Andrew and Mr. Bankston's comments, but, uh, as I understand it, the, and I wasn't at the planning commission meeting either, but as I understand it, concern was raised that it would be interpreted that the sidewalk was an intervening public use, and as a property, you know, you couldn't put a sign between the sidewalk and the back of the curb. This language is intending in, to clarify that you can do that, um, just to remove that doubt. You know, if, if a question arises, it's gonna be on staff to provide that interpretation, if, if anyone has a specific question, location by location, but, um, I think this fits with the general presumption that was in place uh, in the last election cycle, about being able to put it in your front yard. It's really trying to address the middle of Ninth Street, the Broadway medians, those type of areas.
All right, thank you. Does that make you feel more comfortable, Mr. Farber?
Obviously, it's you guys' decision, I, I appreciate you, uh, listening to me, and, and thanks again, fellas.
But I, I appreciate your diligence in reading it several times, and, uh, well, recommend that as, as, as the diligence that's required to, to wade through these. Thank you. All right. Any other public comments on this issue? They come up to the podium?
My name is Tanya Greer, and I just have a simple suggestion. Why not highlight when you're making the amendment on what you're highlight, what you're changing? That way, people know that it's been changed, and what they're looking for that's being changed. Um, the reason why I say this is because it's a transparency issue, and, um, which can become a problem even in emails, when you receive an email, it says one thing, but if the person that you send it back to by replying, um, depending on the lock, the transparency lock, which is a gray lock or a red lock. If it's a red lock, and you reply in that email that the person sent you, that person that is receiving it from them is not gonna see the change that they can make to it. With the gray lock, they can't make those changes. So, I mean, it's just a transparency thing, and it's English, and it's language, and letting people know what you're changing to explain, and know what they're looking for when they're reading the amendment. So they know what they're looking for that's being changed, if that makes sense. Highlight it if you have to, but let the viewers know regardless of whether it's their property or not. It is, it's just, it's easier to help people understand what's being changed, and, and being able to know where to look for when they're reading the new changes.
Okay, well, the, the recommended changes were printed and read, and we will
Oh, okay.
hope that, uh, our media coverage will highlight the substantive changes
Gotcha.
in their article.
Okay.
Tomorrow and/or Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I add one comment that?
Sure.
Hopefully is, hopefully is helpful. Certainly, the original draft, as considered by the planning commission, spoke to what the unpaved public right-of-way immediately abutting private property is not. Given that the concern had to do with, as I understood, the planning commission was concerned that the intervening sidewalk or a bike, hike bike path would not be viewed as that intervening public use. That's what prompted in the drafting, uh, was to then interject addressing what it is. The only reason I make that point is that, uh, it does reintroduce the concept of other public uses as still being potentially intervening separations. The model, if there are, if there's future identification of public uses that are not deemed to be appropriately recognized as intervening uses, the drafting was designed to certainly make possible further examples of public uses, if there are any, that are identified in the future, then those additional examples of intervening public uses could be addressed, uh, in a way that they would not be viewed as intervening public uses for purposes of this regulation. So, I think no one likes to have to anticipate future amendments, but, uh, hopefully the structure is there that would enable that to occur if ongoing experience identifies those.
Thank you.
Mayor, it's a little unusual, but could I request about a five-minute recess for the city attorney and I to confer? Just have one question that may impact your deliberations.
Absolutely.
I'd like to run by him.
We will recess for five minutes. Thank you, all right, back in session.
So, we've got a, a bit of a unique circumstance in that, um, and the staff report kinda walks you through how many votes it takes to concur with an action of the planning commission, and how many votes it would take to override the action of a planning commission. And four votes, uh, is, is the authority to override the planning commission, and we only have three commissioners in attendance today. If you were to postpone, uh, second reading till next week, you have the opportunity, uh, I think, as a full commission, to take this up and resolve with certainty, um, your intent to adopt this and your authority to adopt it. My concern is if we find ourselves with the ordinance adopted and any confusion challenges about the authority of that ordinance and enforcement, that puts us back into an, an impractical situation. So, my recommendation would be, uh, to give it another week, postpone it, allow the entire commission to be in attendance, and then potentially have, i- if there are four votes, then you're deliberately taking action on your own authority.
Now, is the revised writing considered a major revision?
Well, that's the issue at, at question.
It seemed fairly?
Benign?
Just, obviously, just my personal opinion, it seemed to be more of a clarifying.
That, that was certainly the intent, and that's our interpretation, but if that interpretation is going to be subject to repeated challenge between now and the election, that represents a practical difficulty in terms of enforcement, and four votes by the commission resolves that conversation definitively.
Any comments?
I'm fine with it.
Mr. Longline?
I'm okay.
So entertain a motion to, now, we would be tabling the motion that has already been amended.
You would be postponing till next week, consideration of the second reading.
It's the motion that's already been amended, though.
Correct.
Or not.
You, you amended the first reading, and you passed it, then you made a motion to declare compelling public interest.
Oh, 'cause you only went for the compelling public interest.
Then, I'm gonna need someone to remind me, was there a motion to approve on second reading?
That's?
No.
No, we haven't gotten that far.
We hadn't done.
Actually, we should be able to just move on, shouldn't we?
Well, having declared a compelling public interest on record, that makes it a little confusing.
I wonder if we shouldn't, uh, possibly, if it's your wish, uh, go through the process of reconsideration of that motion.
Okay. Mayor, I make a motion that we postpone second reading until the next commission meeting on ten seventeen.
If you could offer us a a motion to reconsider the action to, to declare a compelling interest. Right, so basically, what we need to do is undo our action to declare a compelling interest, or a motion to reconsider that issue would take us back to right before we voted.
Correct.
That's correct, and because, as I recall, all three votes were in favor, any one of you are in a position to make that motion for reconsideration.
I'll give you a shot at it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Davis, I move that we reconsider that previous motion, do I need to go into detail of?
To, to declare a compelling.
Define the compelling public purpose.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded to reconsider the motion to declare a compelling interest, for a, uh, second reading on the same day as the first, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
That motion? That motion carries three nothing.
No.
Like to entertain a motion to postpone.
Well, we're.
We don't even have to postpone.
We're pretty, we're into the parliamentary procedure weeds, I'm sorry, but. Oh, the effect of that action you just took is to take you back to the point in time at which the motion. To find a compelling public purpose was made, so that.
Have to withdraw the motion.
Is the question that is before you. I, that could either be withdrawn or voted upon and presumably defeated.
Well, my personal preference is to. Have the motion withdrawn rather than. Defeat something that I.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I can't recall.
But that makes sense.
I can't recall who the movement was. On that motion to find the compelling public purpose.
Commissioner Lenkowitz. Longbine.
It was made by Lenkowitz and seconded by Longbine.
So the question is whether the movement and possibly the. Commissioner seconding it, Commissioner Longbine, wish to withdraw the motion.
So I hope I'm helping here, the motion to reconsider puts us back to the point that Commissioner Lenkowitz had made a motion that a compelling public interest exists. And Commissioner Longbine had seconded that motion, so this would be an opportunity for Commissioner Lenkowitz to withdraw his motion. And with the consent of Commissioner Longbine, who seconded it, that motion can be withdrawn and taken off the table.
Okay, and I'm not trying to obfuscate or convolute things, but my recollection is I did not make that motion.
I apologize. That's my fault, I had it written down in the paper that Longbine had made the motion, I had looked at the, I typed when I looked at the previous one when you voted to approve it on first reading, I apologize.
No worries.
That's completely my fault.
Okay, so I'll restate, by way of the motion to reconsider, we find ourselves with a motion to determine a compelling public interest exists made by Commissioner Longbine. Seconded by Commissioner Lenkowitz, and you could, you have a couple of options, the mover could withdraw that motion with the consent of the seconder, or you could vote it down.
Mayor, I move that we remove. The compelling public interest from this question.
Withdrawing your motion.
Withdrawing the motion.
Is that fine with this second?
I will second that.
All right, and you're back to before that was.
Right, so at this point, without further action on the part of the commission, you've passed it on first reading, we will return it to your agenda next week for second reading. Presumably five commissioners in attendance, you can take the issue back up, and if there's, in an abundance of caution, you could deem yourselves. Deviating from the recommendation of the planning commission if four of the five commissioners vote in favor of that. And at that point, we are above reproach in terms of any questions about the authority of the action taken with respect to trying to clarify the planning commission's intent.
All right, that sounds clean, thank you, and thank you.
We need to vote on that.
No, because there's no motion on the floor now.
Right, at this point, you passed on first reading and that's the only action you'd be taking today.
Public interest never happened.
And you just went through what is, without a doubt, the most complex parliamentary. Procedure you'll ever be faced with.
It gets no worse than that, we're looking good, all right. We are now actually at other business. Any other business?
Man, I had something and.
I'll talk slowly and give you a few seconds to. And if you get other business after Citizens Forum, feel free to bring it up. We'll now move to Citizens Forum, our opportunity to come to the podium to discuss any issue on your mind, we ask you to. Gear your comments towards the three-minute window.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ben Wainhold Salina, I want to thank Mr. Brad Anderson for not being like Elvis Presley and leaving the building. Since he's still in attendance. This question could be directed to him, or it could be towards the city manager, because I've never gotten an answer yet. Back on August 15th. The city manager wasn't present and there was a. A study session that wrapped up the River Festival for this year, at that time, numbers were presented. As far as what it took, there was no public. Answering or questions or comments at that, and as today's study session mentioned, the River Festival also, there was nothing there, so. I'm gonna start back with numbers. Mr. Anderson, you might want to write these down, or maybe you have them on the top of your head, back on August 15th, he stated that the River Festival had a cost of $668,000. I do not know if this includes the $32,525 with a 10% contingency. That the commissioners approved on April 18th for a big screen projector for the main stage. When you take into consideration, and I'm gonna go through each one. The money that was actually collected, which would be revenue versus cost. You had risk bands that totaled $210,575. There's 18% that the River Festival charges the food vendors. Based on their food sales of a little over $319,000, that was 57,448. Art booth rental supposedly is at $30 a booth with 120 gets us $36,000. There was in-kind and outside public donations, he gave the number of $140,000. If you subtract all of the revenue from the $668,000. There's still a shortfall of $223,977. Now, my question is, does this come out of general fund? Or does this come out of the budget of arts and humanities, or is, who is paying the shortfall? Of $223,000 according to my figures.
I, well, I'll try to answer in generalities and there is a transfer from the general fund to cover shortfalls, to basically fund the remainder of the River Festival. I don't know the accuracy of your math, but there, there is a transfer that occurs, and my preference would be, rather than trying to narratively discuss that, if we want a higher level of detail. That's a spreadsheet calculation that the finance department should.
Well, I was told on the 15th that there was going to be, in September. There was going to be, the arts and humanities would have their budget review. Of exactly where everything was going, and of course, that didn't happen, so that's the reason why I'm asking that today. So you're saying is that there is a possibility. Whatever shortfall there was, be it $223,000 less or more, that that comes out of the city's general fund taxpayers' money.
Yeah, annually, there is a transfer that is contributing to the River Festival.
Mike, $167,000 of that is in-kind contribution, there, there was no cash, it was, it was what the festival would cost without. Donations of product or service, and that doesn't show on our cash budget, our fiscal year closed September 30th. And we're waiting for the final last minute, any outstanding bills that should now have cleared, and a financial report. Will be prepared with the budget director and your approval for a final outcome, and it will finish in the black. I will guarantee that on everybody's account, so. And I would anticipate. That report before the end of the month, but once those receipts are recorded, we'll, we'll have an updated report that's complete.
All right, so you'll finish in the black with a contribution from the general fund, is that what you're saying?
Negative, no.
No, so you made enough money to cover the $668,000?
Yes. We under-expended and we earned enough revenue. That we will finish on the city of Salinas budget for us, we will finish with a positive balance. On our operating budget for the festival for the year.
See, and that's the question I asked, is did it come out of your arts and humanities budget then, basically, so the, the difference of what you have to come up, comes out of the arts and humanities budget?
Out of the existing approved budget by the city commission and authorized by the city manager for our operations.
Right, I understand that, yeah, so that comes out of your budget, it's not a, oh gosh, we're $220,000 short, we need. Money out of the general fund to cover that River Festival.
That is correct.
Yeah, on an annual basis, we fund arts and humanities.
I realize that, yeah.
Yes.
I know.
That does not include our salaries, but.
So what we'll do is wait for the final.
Yeah, I guess we'll wait for, is there going to be then a scheduling of, of the arts and humanities?
There'll be a financial reporting by the finance director, and we can include that in that conversation, but the conversation we've had is a true-up. In financial spreadsheet form rather than narrative form to answer that question.
All right, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Dalton McDowell Salina, how is it coming on the police chief's search, we haven't had an update on that in quite some time, I've heard we're having issues finding the right candidates.
Applications close the end of the month, we've reviewed the applications and getting started scheduling interviews, that's all I'm prepared to disclose.
Have you, do you have an outside person assisting with this at all, either through a clean or retired chief somewhere?
We, we're using the same process we use for all our other department hires, if need be, on occasion, we'll bring in a recruitment consultant, but we haven't made that decision yet.
And another thing I was gonna bring up, I've looked through all Kansas state law, and I have yet to find, and they, you guys go with the cheapest bidder all the time. There is nothing within Kansas statute that I can find that says you have to. With the.
That you have to what?
That you have to go with the cheapest bidder, there's nothing in Kansas statutes as far as I can find and as far as a business attorney who deals in that type of stuff can find. My thing is with the economy the way it is, with who we have in DC right now, we can't, with all the stuff going on. Why don't we start? Trying to use local contractors if we can, I understand there's, we don't have certain contractors that the city would need local. But if it costs a little more, why don't we use local contractors? Because we have a majority of local contractors that you would need, instead of going out outsourcing it to Wichita or wherever that bridge building company was.
I can answer that, but I'm, I know, because I've heard the city manager explain this before, his answer is gonna be much more succinct and eloquent than mine, so.
You've really raised two issues, one is whether there's a statute that requires going with low bidder, there are statutes that, that address local preference. And there are consequences of local preference, if, if you have a local preference in effect, it impacts your, our contractors doing business in other communities. And having that same local preference subjected to them, and our purchasing policy does not mandate that we go with the lowest bidder, it presumes that that's the best use of taxpayer dollars. And it creates discretion on the part of the city commission to award to the non-low bidder, publicly acknowledging that for transparency purposes. And indicating that they, their intent to do so.
I just think with the economy the way it is, we should try to go with our local bidders as much as we can, there's some stuff they won't bid on. But most of that stays within the city, within the, within the county, so you guys get tax revenue from them spending. On, of course, not, you guys are tax exempt, but you get tax revenue from them keeping the money local.
That's why we encourage them to submit competitive bids.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you, my name is John Blanchard, a couple of items, three in fact, first is I continue to be concerned about our level of staffing at Salina Police Department. With the, the comments of Ms. Trocheck last week about not having fully staffed on her part, and the questions and answers about drug task force and other staffing concerns. I hope that we'll continue to look into that, second thing is, this is my third time at city commission about the. Not following the fire code at River Run and just wondering if anybody has talked, at city staff has talked to the fire chief or the fire marshal?
Yes, we've, staff's had conversations, we've not staffed it entirely through, and we recognize that we need to before it comes back for action.
Okay, thank you, just, I appreciate you looking that, into that, I also encourage you to watch the planning commission meeting from last week, there were several misrepresentations from staff. To not only commissioners, but to me as well, I'd just like to also remind you that the. Current code with appendix D adopted was not, was not first introduced in 2016, it was passed by ordinance first in 2004. As part of the IFC adoption. By ordinance 04, 10209, adopting in 2003, international fire codes. My third thing is back in June, I had come and asked about city policy on incentives for real estate development. And who is in charge of doing due diligence, I know that part of our policy for special assessment requires that no developer can be. Delinquent in special assessment taxes or state income tax, two things, and then also due diligence, on the due diligence front, I will lead, I will. The SEC, I'll lead you to a headline, SEC charges Bay Area real estate developer with misleading investors. And that's from May 2000, May 5th, 2021, charged Maxwell Drever with misleading investors in a multimillion-dollar real estate fund that he managed, question for the person doing due diligence on that is, has. Have you, have you found out about that, and can you tell the public that there's nothing to worry about there? The second thing in regard to back taxes, the state of California has a franchise tax board, and it has a website that lists the top 500 tax delinquent. Delinquencies, number four on that list is Maxwell Drever of Tiburon, California. That list was last updated October 6th, 2022, a lien was placed on November 29th, 2021, in the amount of $3,147,000, so the question is. Is the city commission concerned at all or aware of all of these, there may be nothing to be concerned about, but are they aware of all these, have they taken those into consideration, and do we have existing policies? That say none of this ought to happen for us to do $25 million projects with, and the fact that you're talking about it this for the third time behind closed doors, when are you gonna start telling the taxpayers about it, thank you.
Well. We have had due diligence and we are aware. And. I'll just have to stop there, okay, thank you. Mr. Farber?
Mayor and Commissioners, again Chad Farber from Salina, I did want to bring up a positive note that took place this past week, we had a couple of threats at our local high schools over the last couple of weeks, and I appreciate the response of. Not only our police department, I know there were some extra hours that we put in, but by resource officers and school administrators, principals and so forth. Making sure that our children do stay safe, and I think that needs to be commended by, by our city. The other thing is, going back to our discussion of what was earlier, and I know I already had my piece, so I didn't raise my hand again, but. There is another option, if, if there is truly compelling public interest at stake here in regards to the sign. Ordinance that you're talking about, you could just go along with the wording as brought forward by the planning commission, and that would be able to move the process forward, but again, if you are trying to include that amendment. I see where you guys are going with that as well, I do have one last question and I'll leave this with you for, for this evening. If you were concerned about a challenge. If you were concerned about a challenge to the second reading, should you also have backtrack past the first reading or the approval of the first reading of that ordinance if you are concerned about challenges to that as well?
I don't know if you want a legal opinion on that or a personal assessment of likelihood of a challenge, but I only have one vote. I'm not personally worried about the challenge, but.
More broadly, I guess I would say is between first and second reading is an opportunity in general to revisit and address, so we can certainly take that up between first and second reading.
The mayor, may I have five minutes with the city manager?
You may, this will save me from having to put a five-minute break between this and the executive session, so absolutely, five-minute recess. All right, we are back. In regular session, I say this with all due respect, but humor me.
I think we can give you much more succinct and useful staff support between now and next week than trying to take up the issues of possible reconsideration of the first reading on the fly. So we understand the concern and we will staff it through and be prepared to, by way of written staff report, as well as staff report to walk you through the issues in better detail or in detail next week.
All right. And just one question, in the, what I think would be unlikely, but possible event that four people next week, four commissioners disagreed with the amended motion, would that motion then have to be? I don't know if you could, it would either have to be brought back for reconsideration by someone who voted for it, which would have to be the case because that person would have switched the vote.
All the more reason that between now and next week, we can do a better job of staffing that through. I understand your question and you raise a good point and we would need to have all those possible scenarios accounted for.
I will trust your judgment on this and we will. Did you recall your other business item?
Nope.
Okay. All right. We will then entertain a motion for an executive session. I'm sorry, we hadn't finished citizens forum probably, had we? All right, come on for it.
It won't take long if you're going to review Robert's Rules of Order. At one time, we had a parliamentary club in Salina. My mother was an avid, devoted individual and that's what they did. They got together and discussed Robert's Rules of Order. She was very much, also worked every election and it was by the book.
That's right.
I do wish we could hearken back to that. I would also point out that expressions of emotion are outlawed in your procedures every week with your list of activities for the commission meeting. Any sort of emotional display is outlawed. But I won't tell if you won't, but anyway. And I think you should incorporate the phrase, "I second that emotion." So, it's an old pop tune. Anyway, I got here just at the end of the discussion about trees and their manicuring and something that's concerned me, going back to the last freeze ice storm that we had, and there were lots of limbs and whole trees that came down. And the city leased or contracted for a monster rotary chipper or shredder. They don't chip. And spent a lot of money at it and it generated material that will eventually break down. But unlike the chipper that the Parks Department has, which is a Bandit chipper by the by, I think that model runs about $50,000 or $60,000 or something like that and makes a very nice product that can be used wherever you're mulching. And the city could use a lot of that material. I don't know if you've noticed in Oakdale Park around trees, generally speaking, grass doesn't like to grow. And if you're trying to hold moisture in the soil, bare soil is, that's one of the reasons that farmers will break up the soil after harvest or whatever, is to, it looks like you'd lose moisture that way, but the net, there's a net benefit. And as far as I know, the city has used its supply of mulch that they've, that they've made from limbs that have come down. So anyway, I was sad to see what they did out on the old runway. For one thing, that equipment was heavy enough that it did some, at least surface damage to the concrete, which takes some doing with concrete that old, as hard as it gets over the years. But in any event, you won't be able to process, as they did, logs as well as branches out on the street. The mobile chippers or shredders simply aren't up to that task. And if you graduate into equipment that's large enough, powerful enough to deal with that material, the mobility of it, it's just not a practical way to go. And I would suggest that you look ahead if river redevelopment ever occurs, and I'm sure at some point it will. If you want to see trees, just go along the old river channel. That is Tree City. And I would suggest at least looking at a type of shredder that I believe McPherson County uses. Last I knew, and this was years ago, when I visited, McPherson County has a monopoly. If they wish to exercise it on anything you throw away in McPherson County, they get first dibs. And that law has apparently passed muster, it was decades ago.
Just to kind of, you're suggesting that we?
But that you look to see if a horizontal style grinder, and the horizontal style grinders are both safer, more versatile and more flexible. The really good ones, you can make a number of adjustments as to the size and the shape of the.
Just to help, I see our public works director taking notes and he will look into this.
And how soon you would have to do this. I don't know if the works conference, I quit going when they moved it to Las Vegas. I went many years.
We'll let him work out all those details.
If, if you're going to have to deal with trees coming out with the river redevelopment and it will cost money to do that, if you can purchase equipment that will aid in that, none of this equipment is cheap to buy, but it's far more expensive to lease.
Just for the time though, because we're not done with our meeting here. But the suggestion has been made and received by the person who needs to hear it.
And I would, so I would heartily suggest, you know, that you do that. I would also suggest that.
Mr. Ritz, we need to move on.
Okay, well, if, that you hold on, the Bandit chipper that you have now is in good shape, the city could do with more than two of those. And so anyway, and a spoon.
Thank you.
You should work with those folks.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next speaker.
They are so talented and they could be very, and would be very helpful to you, I know, very cooperative.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, we will now entertain a motion for executive session.
What do you need? Twenty-five? Mayor, I move the city commission recess into executive session for 25 minutes to discuss the subject of legal considerations relating to the Drever Partners LLC development proposal with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed public information in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 6:26.
Fifty-one, you said 25 minutes? So that'd be 6:51?
Yeah, that's what we're at now, 6:26. I'm sorry.
So we'll be back at 6:51, zero second.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded for the city commission recess into executive session for privileged consultation with its attorney for the reasons. Red, who else would be in the?
Myself, city attorney, deputy city manager, assistant city manager and director of community development services.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three-nothing. We'll be back at 6:51. We'll be back at 6:51. We are back in regular session. We don't have a, any specific action to take, but the City Manager will give a short update.
Yeah, a couple of things that I think the public's aware of. I believe it was two weeks ago now, Mr. Driever attended the meeting and offered up Presidio Development as a developer indicated, interested or possibly interested in syndicating, as they refer to it, the project that Driever has been working on. So, at this point, we're in conversation with the representative of Presidio Development. Essentially, he's doing his due diligence on the project, and we're doing our due diligence on him, and if that all comes together, then, then we're into negotiating details of a development agreement that, that cover our interests and spell out the, the details of any type of agreement that would be put into place. So, um, he's, given the time sensitivity of this, that's why we've kind of been having weekly meetings and weekly conversations rather than letting this kind of play itself out over a month's time and then report back to you. But I think we're headed, we've got enough conversation going now, he's got enough work product that he's working on delivering that we're going to know real soon what his sense of his due diligence is, and we will then be able to do our due diligence accordingly.
Right. Thank you. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
We adjourn until next Monday.